Yeah, we need to want to say.
If we can get everybody to take their seats, we will get rocking and rolling. Mayor, would you like to kick us off this morning, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I was. I was having a moment. Okay, so, uh, today is Friday, April twenty eighth, twenty two, three, our second day of our city council on the street, and I would like to call this meeting to order. Notice is hereby given to the members of the city council, to the general public that at this works at, at this budget session, the city council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public for legal advice and discussion with the city's attorneys for any item listed on the following agenda. City Clerk, come over real call.
Mayor Duggan?
Here, Vice Mayor Asland.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. Member House.
You're the councilmember Matthews.
Here, councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
All right, I will, uh, lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We missed the slide.
We have one hanging outside. Do we know where it is?
I don't.
It's supposed to face north.
North. I pledge the allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for whose existence, one nation, under God, indivisible, without a fear of justice or. Speaker. Would you ring permission state?
The Michigan City flag that is the acting against quality of life for all.
Thanks. Go ahead, councilmember McCarthy, the land acknowledgement.
Well, as I said yesterday, Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges ancestral homelands as this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands still inhabited by native descendants, order now consecrated to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their divisions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past presence and future generations. We'll forever know this place as home.
Councilwoman Harris, I'm sorry, but, um, councilwoman House has made you sit next to me. Uh, okay, so item number four is our budget retreat. Take away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Council. I apologize for not having the American flag displayed for the pledge. I'm gonna own that one. Uh, we'll get it right next time. I hope everybody's doing well. Yesterday was very productive. Thank you for, uh, very good dialogue throughout the day. It was engaging, which is what we like to see, and we hope that that continues again today. Uh, wanna start off with a couple of thank yous. Um, who is responsible for the wonderful food and coffee in the back?
Sean Johnson.
Sean Johnson. And then, yes, if you haven't noticed, we have homemade cookies this morning, courtesy of Shannon Anderson. Thank you, Shannon. Uh, and then, uh, before I turn it back over to Katie, and we will launch into business, we, we made some, uh, headway yesterday. Uh, and that's great, because we will spill over into today, being ahead of schedule, and, uh, there's a possibility, we don't wanna make predictions, but there's a possibility of, uh, ending the day early and starting this beautiful weekend on a good note. Uh, and on the good note topics, I'm gonna go off script and ask, uh, last week, we had an entourage go to, what, in DC? And I'm wondering if other wonderful people who were involved in that trip, if you could stand. And Sean, could I? You heard? Um, so these DC trips, Shannon, you were on that trip. Um, yeah. Night drive. Um, sometimes, you know, uh, we, we field questions about, well, what is the relevance of, of these trips to Phoenix, to DC? Well, it's an easy answer. Uh, it's relationship building. Uh, we meet with our delegates in Phoenix, we meet with our delegates uh, in Washington DC. The agendas are action-packed, uh, typically nine, ten meetings in a day. You're running from one office to the next and, uh, covering a lot of ground. There's also very tangible benefits. So, three years ago, before COVID, when we went to DC, we, uh, had a nice appropriation from the Army Corps to help us with our real life project. This time around, courtesy of this group, uh, we received some good news yesterday from Senator Sinema's office. Would you care to read that email?
Absolutely. So, um, Mayor did talk to her yesterday as well. And she has, um, put all three of our earmarks request in her list. So that includes the three hundred and thirty-seven thousand for the prescribed fire training exchange. And this member Sweet was in charge of that one during our trip. And then we also had the three million, three hundred for the regional flood detention project. So we got that on the list as well. And then we have the four point five million for the proposed Northern Arizona primary hospital facility to get us our fire station set up.
Yeah, that's we are, our match on the fire state. A great way to start the budget retreat. We just wanted to recognize the fine work of the DC group, so thank you all very much. Councilmember Sweet, you do have a nickname now. You wanna share it with the groups?
I am now in the speaking.
I think, and thank you so much for that. I think with that, we're gonna kick it off to Katie. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Yay, Katie.
Good morning. So, some adjustments to our agenda for today. We will be starting off with the key community priorities with Heidi Hansen, and we're gonna uh, finish that section off with Paul and Nicole, and we'll go into future planning. Our goal is to get through that before our ten AM break. We'll see how that works out, right? But that's the goal. And then we're still planning on having lunch at eleven thirty. So, uh, we will adjust as needed depending on questions and extra time for discussion. And just so you know, after we conclude today's meeting, there'll be an executive session, so everyone will have a chance to, to pack up, say goodbye, wish everyone a well weekend, and then they'll start that executive session. Any questions about the agenda for today? Okay, fantastic. So, as a reminder, I'm here to help us manage time. You will have a little reminder. If you're presenting a five-minute reminder and then a one-minute reminder, um, to help keep you on time. Remember that as we're, um, engaging in discussion, we're here to ask questions, make sure we're understanding, clarifying. Uh, we're really not into the problem solving or the how of today. So one of my other roles is to make sure we stay um, out of the weeds and on topic, but that doesn't mean you don't have time to ask questions. Of course, we have that time built in as well. And I will also be managing the online comments, so if you're online, you have a question or a comment, you can use the chat box or raise your digital hand. And one of my other, uh, responsibilities is to keep the energy up. So, let's do one quick round of let's settle it, and we'll get started with Heidi. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, so this is another one people tend to feel very passionate about. By the way, many of you came to me after yesterday and said, I need to talk to you about the toilet paper. That's the only one correct way to do this. Mayor Duggan?
Someone who was watching online who said pineapple does not belong.
Oh! See, and, and City Mayor Phillips and I were saying, oh, it does. So.
I actually shared a photo I shared with you.
Do you, why don't you tell everyone about it?
I was in a public restaurant, and there was one rolled this way, one rolled this way. So I took a picture of it, which I can show to anybody who wants to see it.
Like two right next to each other.
It's hilarious. Send me up to take a photo of it.
Yeah, it was. Thank you for sharing. Okay, so this one's a big one. Are you ready? Which one is better, iPhone or Android? iPhone or Android? So, when you're ready to vote, make sure you're ready. Raise your hand for iPhone. Okay, now raise your hand for Android. Oh, that's close. Let's do one more vote, one more vote. Raise your hand for iPhone. Oh, and now Android again? Man, I think that'd be too off. I'm gonna deal with iPhone. All right, thank you for being here today, and without further ado, Heidi, thank you.
Good morning, uh, Vice Mayor Phillips, and Vice Mayor Hansen. You can offer to tell the director. And I will say that if IT thinks it's Android, you might all need to rethink your iPhones.
Hey. I'm questioning your IT division.
Uh, so one of our key priorities is a robust Brazilian economy, and I raised my hand to talk about this one because it's something very near and dear to the division that I get to direct. Um, but as you will hear today, it's not just our division and the county that makes up this robust Brazilian economy. We have everybody from the organization helping with this. And to start off, um, Chris Brody, he is our minimum wage group, and he actually has created the multilingual advertisements for minimum wage, and I think the latest upgrades that he had done this past year was in Navajo. So I don't know all the languages. If you are curious, you'll have to ask Chris, but I will tell you, I think that he's definitely getting the word out, making sure that it's very accessible to all. Um, we also, we came before you, a couple weeks ago, and talked to you about our ARPA funds and how we gave those to small businesses and to the tourism. And I believe we did over sixty seven of those, and we got four hundred and fifty thousand dollars out into the community, to these businesses, all thanks to this, this council and the previous council for allowing us to do so. That's pretty exciting. Um, and then management services and procurement, they, uh, they partnered with ABCs to identify opportunities for joint purchasing to leverage. And, um, Patrick is definitely making great strides. He says basically what he does is he multiple agencies join in one solicitation. And then that solicitation helps them to basically garner better, um, rates and things like that. So I will tell you that he's doing that at a great volume. And he said some examples was when they do fuel for fleets um, for the animal sheltering services, which include like city and county. And then he also gave a really good line with our employee benefits where we, our city, county, CCC, FOST, and Mount Mine, we're all in this together. So that's a good example of that partnership. Fire, of course, is always doing their part to help find money, and they secured grant funding for forest restoration projects. And then we have a portable housing creation, um, was, there was a creation by managing the portable housing incentive program to support low-income housing tax credit applications and managing city land. So that's pretty exciting. Well, I guess I have to change my slides, right? There you go. And then in community development, they're managing neighborhood and specific plans that create policies and standards for helping places people want to live. Um, we have a group, an internal group, it's inter-division staff, where they actually review plans and developments that are gonna be happening in our community, and they are doing, uh, rechartering. They are establishing reviewers, uh, they're changing the processes and procedures, and above all, their trained staff. I knew that when you're new to the organization and you're asked to go to IDS, it's a little bit overwhelming because it goes through this extensive process where they go around the room, and stormwater hears about it, and this person hears about it. So, um, it's good to hear that they're doing more on that. Uh, I'm very excited about the fact that we are very close to installing that airport paid parking program. We talked to you a little bit about that. We had a nice conversation with our city manager the other day, with our, um, management services director, and our airport director, and our finance, other finance, um, staff. And we have decided that we were hoping to open up the parking lot at the end of May for Memorial Weekend, but we'd like to have a little bit of a grace period because we think there'll be, of course, functionality issues that we wanna make sure are fine. So we're looking more, I believe it's at a July one hard start. So we're gonna hopefully have the system set up, and people can actually get used to going through the gate and all that process, but we will not be charging them until, till July one. And so, I don't know if anybody has any other questions on that, but we will definitely supply the talking points, the rate structure and everything, so when you get asked questions, you feel like you're very well versed. So good. What do you think, Megan? All right, and then we're still working on the airport thirty-nine point four-five acres for business development. We have been working on this with Jentira, um, for a very long time. And so we're doing some final negotiations, and we're hoping that it will come to you at some time very soon. You've seen us at each session quite a few times, so you're very versed in this. Then, um, we are continuing to do funding. We had some, uh, nonprofits that we wanted to be able to help fund, and they weren't actually eligible for what we were doing, per se, in our ARPA funding. And they weren't actually eligible for some of this other mini-grant program that we had done before. So now we've actually put some stuff in the budget so that we can hopefully help that a little bit greater. And these are ones that aren't just involved in the arts and sciences grants that we do through Creative Flagstaff. So you'll see a little bit more about that. Um, we are continuing to work on workforce development and economic development, so we're working to get a, um, economic development master plan done this year, so that we actually have a plan for the community and for the the city. And so we are out at RFP on that right now, so there'll be more to come, and maybe some of you will be joining us in some of those focus groups. Um, in Discover Flagstaff, we're always continuing to encourage safe and responsible tourism. Uh, we definitely don't want anybody to come to our, our community and not care about our community, so we are definitely working to continue to brand that up in all of our campaigns. And then it looks like, um, in water services, they coordinate the county, state, and federal agencies for pre and post-fire, uh, community flood mitigation preparedness. And again, um, we love it because the fire group always uh, now works with our Discover Flagstaff team, and we talk about our being fire-aware, and they help us actually formulate our campaigns each year. And we actually, they allow us to use some of their fire staff in our videos so that we can have those in all the key communities. So we're gearing up for that right now, and, um, I was on a production meeting the other day with Trace Ward and his team, and they've actually identified some firefighters that they're gonna reach out to Chief Gayler to see if we can use them. And then in pros, um, this is very true. Um, in order to keep, we have to maintain the fields and the, uh, disc golf and all of those areas because the fact that it is a draw for visitors to come here. And of course, we want our locals to enjoy that and have a better quality of life. So again, having that does create community. And last but not least, um, in pros, uh, they talk about the sports tournaments, uh, like softball. Mayor just left, and I just said softball. I thought she'd be really excited about that word. And then um, this year, we had the Professional Disc Golf Masters Tournament, which is really exciting. And then there are other signature bits. We have the Winter Wonderland Tree Lighting. I think you'll be happy to know that we are going to be putting a new tree in the heritage. We're actually buying a new tree for Heritage Square for that lighting, um, ceremony. And then the old tree, uh,
That guy.
That guy right there, city manager, I should do that with the fake in me. If I had to call you Fred, I could be so important. It's the city manager. Um, has asked that the tree that we were putting in Heritage Square go over to City Hall, so we're gonna work that all out. Um, but anyway, everything's gonna be very well lit and, and really nice. But I think you're gonna be excited. That tree's gonna be even larger Heritage Square, and, um, we're gonna, Discover Flagstaff is helping with that purchase. Um, also, they said that they were, oh, this is in, um, Nicole's area, where they awarded fifty thousand in Neighborhood Sustainability Micro Grants to inspire creative projects that enhance community sustainability, and to foster partnerships that promote sustainable and healthy lives. And so that's very exciting. And then, um, she also, we thought this was really great to mention, that they completed nearly the one megawatt of residential solar installations through the solar unit neighborhoods, bringing the community closer to the twenty-thirty target of ten megawatts. Gee, exciting. That's what we have, a robust Brazilian economy, and I think that's a pretty great story to tell. So do you have any questions for any of us? If they're hard, I send them to somebody, like, to that guy. Any other questions?
I can have a hard question for you.
Great. Great, and then this. The black and green. Where should I be?
Paul and Nicole are on the agenda next. So, let's go there.
I think, uh, an adjustment from yesterday is while we're waiting for people to set up, we might as well applaud the last speaker, even if in the, or in the same section in the agenda, okay? Yeah.
Okay. Maybe just come up here from. Right, um, Paul, what is it? It's the engineer, and happy, happy to talk about the whole community. Um, kind of my, my journey here, I've been with the city now for about five or six months, and it is a really good community, and there's a lot of great programs, and the city does a lot for the community to, to actually make it more livable with, um, you know, public works, just taking care of snow removal, we've got great parks and recreation, sustainability, so I'm gonna get to talk a little bit, little bit about that. Uh, for increased community engagement, uh, I believe last year they started the public, public affairs department. So they, they do a great job on engaging the community through additional outreach platforms. Uh, they, they work on press releases. I believe I saw two come through yesterday when we were sitting here through emails. Um, they also get posted on the city website. They have great use of, uh, Instagram, Twitter, Facebook. Um, and then we also have project-specific websites when we're doing capital projects, so residents in the area of this project can sign up for those letters or email blasts. So that's, that's been a big help as well. Um, for relationship building through neighborhood liaison, um, we have the, uh, Neighborhood Partnership Coalition, and they recently had a meeting on April nineteenth, and that's, um, comprised of residents, students, NAU administrators, business owners, so really engaging the community around the college and the neighborhoods to get everybody involved, um, knowing what's going on, uh, in those areas with the neighborhoods around the college. Um, for the museum, flood and pipeline, west flood, um, community awareness, you know, council has seen many presentations about, once a month, we're, um, presenting at council on the progress we're making on those, whether we're talking about the Highway One Eighty project or the spruce wash. So again, uh, making the community aware through, um, the public council meetings. We also have some neighborhood meetings for the spruce wash. And then there's also some specific websites and newsletters that, um, our public affairs helps out with as well. Um, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, um, council recently saw that, um, uh, at the April eleventh meeting, through our housing, and there was, um, a recommended award of one point nine million dollars, and council should see those, those contracts coming back after the summer break. Um, the Prop Four Forty-two Housing Bond Fund is a right-to-occupy housing plan. Um, council saw these, um, I believe back in February, I think on Valentine's Day, but I think you'll be seeing more of that coming up, housing as well. Um, for the airport, um, recruiting new air service and new destinations, uh, we had the, uh, recognition of Barney for his retirement, but we also saw that, um, Bryant-Gold Airport was, uh, named the airport director, and if anybody attended his meeting, he went through his plans, um, to handle this. Uh, he's going to, um, conferences to promote the airport. He talked about tracking final destinations of flight of travelers, so we should see what those final destinations are, and report that to the different airlines so they can possibly make new routes. So if people are traveling to, uh, I think he brought up San Francisco as a final destination, then he can talk to the airlines about, hey, you might wanna do a San Francisco route, um, maybe once a week or something like that. Uh, expanding on the funding for the arts and sciences and, um, the, the nonprofits to the Creative Flagstaff, um, they are offering more funding now, so we're seeing, uh, they've, they've been giving more grants, that's really good. Um, expansion, beautification in action. Um, these are for the smaller projects. Again, I think the max, the max award is between four and five thousand dollars. But again, they're seeing more applications as well, and those have really, um, done a lot of the hurdles and different things you see around town. So again, helping beautify, beautify the area. Um, the safe and, um, acceptable snow play areas. Um, there's a snow play map on the town website, and they receive over two thousand calls a year. So this, this helps, um, residents and more, more so visitors know where they can go and how to use those areas responsibly. You know, not leave anything behind. I know there's a lot of, um, see a lot of broken sleds, so they can pick those up. So we're not picking those up, you know, once the snow melts. Okay, burn, burn, and clean. Uh, for the, for the drinking water and sanitary sewer systems, again, um, our water services department does a great job um, providing, you know, the high-quality, um, sustainable water delivery to the, to the city residents, and then sanitary sewer. Those are a lot of things that go unseen. You know, people just know when they turn their faucet on, they, they want to have good clean water come out, and they flush the toilet, and it goes away. You know, it's, it, it takes a lot. There's a lot of large, um, capital projects that are involved in that. We recently had some bonds approved to help with that. And then there's the, just the day-to-day operation and maintenance of the system, so a big, big thanks, thanks to those guys. Um, operating, maintaining the stormwater system. Uh, the city manager talked yesterday about how stormwater is gonna probably be breaking out into its own section. Currently have, you know, two staff members there. Uh, they, they inspect, um, and do maintenance on about a third of the stormwater system annually. Um, this year, that's been a little bit more with the, with the snow melt flooding issues. So that's gonna be a big help, um, getting, getting some more staff there. And they're asking for a project manager, so that will also help free up some of the capital project staff that, that gets some of those, um, stormwater projects turned over to them once they, once the stormwater staff currently get them up to speed. Um, implement income qualifying homeowner link repair and fixture efficiency programs. The Water Services Department has a program through grant funding where lower, lower-income, um, qualifying homeowners can apply to have leaks fixed or more efficient, um, fixtures, faucets, toilets installed in their house. And the, um, Water Services Department, um, will, will get the plumbers and make sure that the right fixtures are put in, so that, that's a good program as well. Um, capital projects delivery, um, replacement of aging infrastructure. You're seeing that right now in, in coping in those states where we're redoing aging water, sewer, uh, resurfacing the streets, putting, putting a curb in, putting sidewalks in where there's gaps. Uh, when we do the spruce wash project on Grandview, um, when we'll be replacing the aging of water and sewer on that street as well. We don't wanna go in and put in a new street and then just tear it up in five, ten years as the water and sewer, um, fails. So we work closely with the Water Services Department to make sure we're coordinating capital projects and, and doing everything at once. Uh, biking pedestrian improvements. Again, the, the city manager talked about the, the transportation section and breaking that out into two different programs, traffic engineering, and, um, active transportation planning. That'll be a big help for, for Martin, who's our current, you know, our current only transportation planner. Uh, happy to announce that, uh, might be, have filled, um, a transportation planner position that has been open for twenty months. So, yeah. We have a graduate student from NAU that's gonna be joining our team, so we're excited about that. That's gonna be a big help, big help for Martin. And again, with this, uh, budget, we have a, another transportation planner, so we would have three, three in that group, so that's a big help. And then when, again, the transportation improvements with the active transportation. And then when, again, the transportation improvements with the active transportation master plan components, where we're looking at capital projects for road and for street improvements, when we have developments coming that are doing street improvements. Martin has been very involved now in making sure that those ATMP components are in those projects that have been taking up a lot of his time away from, you know, delivering, you know, foot trails and biking and crossings that we have in the pipeline. So with the with the new employee coming on and hopefully the new position getting approved, that'll be really help in pushing those items forward. And supporting healthy lifestyle for most open space. The, oh, yes, sorry.
So walk me through the differentiation between transportation and active transportation a little bit. Will active transportation have its own lead engineer or are you going to be overseeing?
So so the
We're planning an engineering to
Yeah, yeah. So the way we're envisioning it is our traffic engineer Jeff Bowman will be the be the the section lead or city director over over transportation. Then you're going to have an engine, you're going to have an engineering, you're going to have an active transportation planning, which is then going to have engineers on one side and active transportation planners on the other, and we work closely together. So that's that's the vision.
So when it comes to the design of particular features and connectivity, that that will be done through your general engineering.
But it'll be it'll be reviewed by the active transportation planners. We have unfunded but prioritized an associate engineer position in being the active transportation component. So eventually, there will be an engineering element to that, but as Paul mentioned, the the two two groups will be working closely. Yeah, then when every product that comes to community development, we see like subdivision come in, you know, engineering, you know, and transportation planning, we'll be looking at those plans as well. Make sure the proper road road improvements are in there, connectivity to any trails, any pedestrian crossings that are needed. It's really, it's really exciting. It's it's kind of an symphony, and we're starting it with the Butler, the Butler Road improvements right now. We're really taking a deep dive into what the Butler Four Street will look like, whether it's a roundabout, it's it's an intersection. Is it, you know, a roundabout with slip lanes or it's an intersection, how many legs, how many turn lanes? So we're really evaluating level of service, bicycle, pedestrian friendly, you know, sustainability is in those meetings, looking at, you know, emissions. So it's, we're we're working through it, and it's going to be, it's exciting, John. So again, for the open space and for the foot travelers, Pro, they have counters out on the trail system so they can see how many people are going to the open space areas and how many people are using specific trails. So again, over a hundred thousand users in two thousand twenty-two to open space and two hundred fifteen thousand for the foot trails. I did my first foot trails the other week, got lost. It took me about an hour and a half to get back home. Promoting the trail.
Paul or maybe Martin, all right, is two hundred fifteen thousand a lot?
Uh, I would have to ask maybe Amy in the back how that is from previous years.
Or just in other communities too.
Come on up, Amy.
Center. Come on up.
Yay.
I just don't know if that's a big number.
That's a big number. You know, what what we'll tend to see are we have our high high view series Buffalo Park, Blue Trail, Mars Hill. Where we see low usage, which was surprising, is along John Wesley Powell, along Pine Canyon where there's that asphalt trail. So I mean, that's a total users over a twelve month period. And I would say you see, I would see high months too. And even with our snowfall, we still saw that. I could pull the data from two thousand twenty-one because we have these exact foot trail counters up. I'm going to guess it increased because we just started to see an increase when the pandemic hit anyway with the usage of our outdoor spaces. So I do think it's quite a bit, and those are only in a select eight locations. Yes.
The counter for JW Palace, because I drive that road every day, there's people on there every day. So where are the counters?
They are in a two inch by two inch square tube with a little device, and it's an infrared camera, and it will literally go across the entire ten foot, eight foot trail. So not count vehicles, but does count any foot traffic or bicycle.
Or is it positioned?
Or is it positioned?
Yeah.
It is on, it would be backside of the foot trail going across toward the curb of the street.
So if you come up lone tree in turn, is it before that or after that?
It's more downstream if you go close.
Near the bikeless trail, maybe?
A little bit closer to the bike through trail, yes. Yeah. But I do think it's quite a bit of usage. Yeah, no question.
So the snow is way more usage, you're just capturing a small part of it.
That is a small part of it out of the entire fifty-nine mile foot trail system, yes. Just just insolent eight locations.
I've seen the counter on the Mars Hill Trail.
It is in you too.
The first time. First time I saw it, I said, what's this? And then I figured it out.
Yeah, so my guess is there's more users than two hundred fifteen, our entire trail system. This is just what's captured. Good question.
So so the next one, Amy as well, Amy as well. There's a dedicated physician that offered our education for open space. This was approved in last year's budget, and the position was filled in January. So that person has been with the the city for about, you know, four months, four months now. I don't know if they maybe have to talk about what they're actually guys. The Community Resilience, Resilience Project, that's a monthly workshop, and that's been a successful partnership between sustainability and the library where they where they talk about the community resilience, the climate change, so again, a good educational program towards sustainability and library partner on that. Cleanup efforts on the trails, over a hundred miles of trails and avenues. They've collected six hundred bags of trash recycling, and this is a, this is a year round effort. Nearly one thousand volunteers contributing about eighteen hundred service hours. At the time, the slide wasn't together, and that that number is now up to over two thousand service hours. So that's a, that's a lot of work that people are volunteering, helping keeping the trails and the and the city clean. They rented all the community garden plots last year, and they're looking to expand expand those gardens in the future, so that's that's another great program. And hosted the first expert composter certification course. So that was a five week program where residents could come and learn about composting and how to become, you know, advocates for composting and climate climate change. I noticed for the first time the the buckets outside for, you know, bringing your compost waste where we can drop off our what waste, food waste, like fruits, you know, vegetables, grains. So that's a great program as well. And they're going to be offering that class again. It's going to be May seventeen through nineteen, and you can get more more information on sustainability's website. And that is it for the local community. Are there anybody that is this?
And I noticed that you and others brought up the airport, talked about what's going on there. You know, we're losing this airline, we're looking for another one. And that's great. But I never heard anybody talk about Amtrak. And it wasn't that long ago, I saw some numbers of how many people get on and off Amtrak and Flagstaff. And I was very surprised, it was a significant number. There's a lot going on with Amtrak, some of it good, some of it bad. And I would, I would like to think that the city was being involved with that as much as they are with the airport. Maybe not as much, but what a significant effort into that considering that, you know, there's people that want to get rid of Amtrak, there's people that love Amtrak. Again, it brings a lot of tourists here. People come in on Amtrak, they'll get a hotel, they'll go to dinner, which is the kind of stuff they love. They'll go to the Grand Canyon for dinner, so come back, eat dinner again, get a hotel, and then they'll get on the train and leave. And so I would like to see a little more effort on making sure that Amtrak stays in the spotlight. There's some people on the Amtrak board that want to get rid of long distance trains. And, you know, they think, well, we should just run trains from Washington DC to Boston and forget this Chicago to LA or LA to Seattle or San Diego or whatever. The other thing that comes to mind is, I believe, that trains are way more fuel efficient, therefore less carbon emissions efficient, that's one for you Nicole, than airplanes. You know, they use a lot of fuel, but on a current passenger basis, it's probably, I would think it would be quite a bit lower than airplanes. So I'd like to see a little more interest in that area, so I don't know if you have the knowledge.
Oh, I didn't know about that, but with downtown mile project, we are working with Amtrak on that south side platform. So Yeah, that would be a big improvement solid.
Yeah, I I might have mentioned that there there was talk about moving stations down to where the downtown connection center is, but apparently that's turned out to be impractical, not going to happen, but they are going to make boarding easier for in certain certain chances. I do.
Mayor Councilor McCarthy, so we do do advertising for the Amtrak. You probably just don't see it a lot, and so I'll make sure that we share more of that with you. But we just did an ad in the progress section of the Daily Sun to remind them to ride the rail. And it's actually ride the rail campaign. We also just recently received some information on potential grants that we did apply for for Stacy Breckler-Naxx that is gone to our visitor center manager Jessica Lawrence and to Trace Ward, our Discover Flagstaff director. And those two are actively looking into those grants because those grants could be used to actually help continue to enhance the train station, the look and the appeal. We did get someone that had sent a note into the mayor council recently about the train station and that it was not looking in its best shape or whatever. That actually is from a train station employee that we've been talking with, and we have since with that train station employee know that we have been looking into some other grants and some possible things. We also do have a maintenance program. Scott's team is very great about coming out and taking care of things right away. We did remodel the bathrooms a little while ago, and we're looking at another remodel. We also, we do have it in our visit discover road piece. It's a printed piece that you've all pursued to copy of, and it's also one that we have digitally. And in our transportation section, we do talk about the rail service because, as you know, there is nothing that comes from Flagstaff directly to LA anymore because our Saturday flight to LA was very short lived. They were just doing a trial, and of course, the trial failed because they were giving us just a Saturday route. Doesn't work, you have to have return trip. So at any rate, we told them that wasn't going to do well, and that's ended up how it happened. So when they come back, we're hoping for at least two days. So we talk about the rail because of that connection technique. So I'll just make sure that I give you more information and what we're doing. But I do think that we probably haven't done enough inward facing. Like like when we do something in the Daily Sun, we probably need to do a little bit more of that, to get a little bit more of what we're doing. But when we do do advertisement, we talk about how they can come in by rail or by plane or by car. Talk about.
Okay, a couple of problems. So when when you talk about the airport, I'm going to want to hear, well, what's going on with Amtrak? Another couple comments, the, I don't think there's a solution to this problem, but the station is inadequate. It's too small. I mean, like, people are waiting for the train, they're standing in the moment. There's no room for everyone to sit because there's so many people waiting to get on. The other thing I'll mention is Metro Plan had a little subcommittee for a while. And well, it was amazing how much interest there was, not just from Flagstaff, but from Winslow, from Camp Verde. I mean, we had mayors come up from these various cities that were very interested in and, you know, those people coming into Flagstaff, waiting for a train, taking the train. Sometimes like to go to, you know, in Mexico, which is a big city there.
Albuquerque.
Albuquerque, yeah. But it's it's really, it's the only practical way to get to Albuquerque, besides Scranton. So anyway, that's all.
We can, man, Councilor McCarthy, we can always do better, and I'll make sure that I give this information. I'm pretty sure Trace is on the call anyway. And we will definitely make sure that we come in front of you, talk a little bit more about how we're doing rail, not just the airport.
Well, and there's two sides, but one is advertising, letting people know it's there, that it's a good option. It's not for everyone, but some people love it. And but the other part of it is, just like we do with the airlines, is making sure that the service continues and, you know, do some lobbying in that regard is letting people know how important it is to the city. Is it anything important to the city? Even though it's kind of like under the radar, but people use it.
Definitely, and I can't remember if it's in your
I believe it is.
It is, I knew that the the airport has been in your legislative priorities, but we'll make sure that we rail that too. We're all being make sure that we have that conversation.
On the positive side, I'm very glad that we have daily service. Tucson, for instance, does not have daily service, and having daily service is really important. There has been some talk about two trips each way, you know, two to LA, two to Chicago every day. You know, that would be great.
Maybe you should be in one of our videos.
I would do that.
Think I'm going to, I think I'm going to have you in one of our videos. Sorry, I need to get back to that. I do. Councilor Harris, on some sort of.
I was just gonna, I guess, talk a little bit about the train service from LA to to Flagstaff. It's amazing. My son comes here about four or five times a year. And for some of you all that know, he's a freelance videographer, and Amtrak has posted a lot of his he'll do it coming into Flagstaff, so you see, you know, the train station and then going into LA. And so they have reposted almost everything that he sends to them or posts on his page. They catch it and repost it. So if you, so some, so people are looking at it and they're seeing. And he'll post pictures of the meal because he gets one of those little roomettes. And they'll post, you know, because he's sitting there showing his meal, whatever, people want to do their food stuff, you know? And he'll fill other stuff on the train, you know, that he's that, you know, because for the eleven hours or ten hours or whatever it is. And so it's getting out there, at least it's on their website or their Facebook or Instagram or whatever it is that they do.
So to Mayor Councilor Harris, we're, I I just need, if you can send me his name, then what we'll do is we'll start reposting that as well.
Okay.
And that's just really simple for us to do, and that starts to really help us populate our content, should we know who's king. So we'll definitely do that. I appreciate that assistance.
And he says he would, you know, because it's, he can get on the train at four, five o'clock or whatever, six in LA. And by five thirty the next morning, he's here, he's had a good night's sleep, he's not fussing with, you know, security because he's bringing all this camera stuff. And so that might be something to kind of hope for those folks that may be coming here for maybe some kind of work or some kind of whatever. It's it's a much easier trip, and the roomettes are not that expensive for a round trip.
I would say when I first came into the city as a C B director, the, one of the first things that I had to do was to take the rail. And I left Flagstaff and went to LA, then we did a show, and then we came back. And and you're right, it's really, it's kind of a fun experience. And if you have a little bit more time on your hands, then it definitely is a real ease of travel. So I will just say to you, I I recognize what you're saying, we're we'll do a better job at it. And I'm going to take all of what you said to me, I'm going to go jot it down at my table. And we're definitely going to do, make sure we get in front of you more often and let you know how that transportation load is working.
All right, thank you for your discussion.
You got it, it's a great discussion, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. Mayor Councilor Harris, Homeland Health and Sustainability Director. All right, we're going to focus on the environmental stewardship, um, area of arena. And I promise, this is the last time we're going to talk about the Naresco project. Um, but, uh, it's a really important element of the environmental stewardship that we're going to be focusing on facility energy efficiency. So we're going to do deep weatherization, you know, in a number of facilities. We're going to upgrade lighting. Um, Council made a call, we're going to upgrade over 5,000 lighting fixtures. Uh, we're going to be focusing on irrigation to save water. And then, um, we're going to include a few more electric vehicle charging stations uh, for our fleet. Moving into wildfire management, which supports the hero realm forest treatment projects while enhancing local, state, and federal partnerships. Uh, this is obviously critical. Uh, and I want to just do a shout out. I know that Paul, I had the opportunity just before to mention the partnership between the library and sustainability on the resilience project. But this next week, May 6th, um, we are, our focus for the climate resilience project is focusing on wildland forest health. And so our one and only Neil Chapman, um, will be focusing on the three important principles of fire-adapted communities and how these efforts protect our watershed. So if you want to join us, more information is available on our website. And I can also find that out.
The client is wanting to comment, when we were in DC and we met with USDA, uh, Flagstaff was complimented on, um, our innovative ways to manage, uh, fire, our forest health. And, um, even California is now realizing the benefits from that and now following our lead and starting to, what's left of it, of course. But, but it was nice to know that Flagstaff uh, on Capitol Hill looks at Flagstaff and how we are taking care of our forests and stewarding that. And we are making an example for other states, uh, that have forest issues. Um, so I just wanted to say kudos to our city and our forest, uh, management people because it was really nice to hear.
Yeah, absolutely. And the one thing that I so appreciate and am grateful for our partnership with, between sustainability and the fire department, specifically wildland forest health, is trying to get that information out into the community. And so there's more ownership and understanding, um, of, from the community of the value and the need and what it actually is. We've been working a lot with Neil. I mentioned our HEPA air filter program, um, that we've been partnering with the fire department on for two years now. Um, we're trying to help educate about the smoke versus bad smoke. Um, and, you know, there's a lot of layers here, but we do have some stellar folks. Um, great. The next thing I just want to point out is that we are rotating our fossil fuel vehicles for hybrids and electric models when feasible. Um, this is obviously, we are not saying we are going to convert our fleet all tomorrow. We are doing a smart rotation that is fiscally responsible. Um, also looking at when technology is available. Uh, and I'll just offer an example. Uh, I believe it was a few months ago when there was a, a group of individuals from the community who wanted the city to convert its fleet all at once. Um, but that's not how we are approaching this. We are working to do it incrementally in a sound, wholesome way. But a lot of the technology and the needs for the larger vehicles aren't available yet. Um, so we just have to systematically work through that. But we do have our first electric vehicle motorcycle on.
Who gets to drive that?
I don't know, but I'd love to test it out myself. But not that I have a license to. But, um, yes, we just wanted to reiterate. Yeah. Um, but I don't believe it is an increase. But, um, yeah, and I'm not sure how that rotates in and out with folks using it. But I really just wanted to take a moment to emphasize that our plan is to do it systematically. We are not going to do a whole sweep of our, our fleet and then replace everything all at once. Our heritage preservation efforts, um, they promote preservation and reuse of existing buildings. This is very critical, um, for housing purposes as well as economic purposes. And a lot of good work is happening in the heritage preservation program. And then, um, spanning on that, our regional plan update is very, very crucial that we get out into the community. Uh, Sarah and her team just completed some really robust scenario planning that went really well. Um, and of course, there's a regional plan update is important for streetlight policies and priorities, um, for the conservation of natural resources. And that's going to be based on best available science and data. There we go. Um, next, going back to the airport. An environmental assessment of the airport was conducted, uh, just to look at what future projects can, um, unfold. And then they also purchased land to protect runway safety areas. Economic vitality, our partners, uh, this is a really fun partnership with sustainability and economic vitality. Uh, we replenished the innovate waste challenge, which is currently underway. Uh, the sustainable automated tax credit as well as the adaptive reuse program. So doing a lot of great work over there. Um, there are cleanup days and programming around donating to the Flagstaff Trail Initiative. Um, really important work focusing on bringing funds and awareness into FTI. Um, I am going to do a little plug. Is that shameless?
Yes, but please.
Um, also next week, uh, the tourism service day, which is a great, um, effort by Discover Flagstaff and our community stores program are hosting a service day from 11:30 to 1:30. So if you want to help, um, get back to the community and do a cleanup, we've got that organized. It will be from 10:30 to, excuse me, 11:30 to 1:30 on May 10th. And of course, we'll send some more information. Um, and our partners in water services are really focusing on reducing their, their carbon footprint um, through their energy efficiency projects and resource reuse for water infrastructure, which is going to continue to be more and more critical for our community.
That cleanup, I think it's at the same time as the tourism one? Is it the same event?
The tourism one?
Are those at the same time?
As the May 10th, uh, tourism cleanup?
Yeah.
From 11:30 to 1:30. Sorry, same time as, we see there are two different events. Oh, um, I'm sorry, I may have miscommunicated that. Um, it's a tourism service day that, that we're partnering.
Same, same with you.
It's the same event. All right. Our friends in water services are doing a great job implementing a water conservation strategic plan. Um, I'm going to jump down to the last bullet. And they're incorporating incentives to residential and commercial water users um, through their rebate program to focus on water conservation. Uh, we are also in the process of releasing existing streetlights with dark sky compliant light fixtures. Some folks may remember this has been a long haul, um, to get to, uh, agreement with the observatories. And this is an excellent example of collaboration between the city and the observatories. And of course, looking at what technologies are available that, that help with key frontiers, guys. Um, we are partnering with APS. Uh, we are purchasing clean energy through the APS Green Power Partners Program. Uh, Flagstaff was the first partner in this initiative and we were really excited to help APS get this offering across the finish line. And just sum this up. Uh, we distributed $30,000 in grant funds to a community-based organization to employ unsheltered community members for litter payment. Um, this is our Engage and Power and Elevate Program, also known as E3. And we're really excited. It was incredibly successful this year. And we, um, actually have a solicitation out right now, uh, to renew this contract for up to five years. And then we launched the Stream Stewards Program, which facilitates litter cleanup, debris removal, and invasive species, um, from the Rio de flag. And we launched them just last year. We already had 118 volunteers who contributed over 3,300 hours, um, helping us maintain sections of the Rio de flag. The council has adopted their own section. We're really excited about that. And we just launched our watershed cleanup series for the summer. And they'll be the first Saturday every month from day through August. Um, and so we will be looking to community members to help us do these cleanups. And we'll be continuing to send out information. I don't know who was first.
Somebody figured it out.
You can mark yourself.
Go ahead, Louis.
Um, can you go back a fly in that corner? So I did talk to APS about this. What is the difference between, um, the, the regular rate for, um, electricity versus the surcharge?
Well, they said that there was a premium charge to use clean energy. So what's that difference?
So we have him, uh, a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars a year for the entire city. A majority of that is, is water services because they are the city's largest electricity user. Um, but yeah, that premium is going to fluctuate and we are monitoring it. Um, we also are going to continue to look at what other options are available for us.
Um, so is a hundred thousand what we're projected to pay? Or that's what we're paying now before we do the cleaning?
So it's based, it's, it's billed on each month's, um, electric bill. So it's real-time billing, that based on our consumption from last year. Yeah, so we projected it out. So I think it came in at like 107,000.
And prior to that, what was it?
We, this is our first year.
No, I mean, before we use premium.
Um, how much should we spend on electricity? Pull that up. Um, I think around four and a half million.
So the hundred thousand is just the increase.
It's a premium, yes.
Yes, yeah. We spend, uh, 22 million a year on. I can get that. Thank you. Yeah.
That's great.
Other slide. I'm curious if you're comfortable sharing the name of the community-based organization? If not, that's fine. Uh, my other question is, um, invasive species removal? I'm assuming that's mostly plant material, but does that include any vertebrates or invertebrates or?
Plant material, yeah. We're focusing on plants. And yes, the, uh, organization that was awarded the grant last, um, year, they finished it up this fiscal year, was CATS. So the, the mobile unit, um, employed. And there were some updates, uh, in our city council reports, but I'm happy to share the finding report with the council because there's some incredibly moving, um, stories in there.
That was a very successful program.
It was incredibly successful. Um, and the fun news is we did get a match from the state of Arizona for this year. So we have, we have $16,000 for this offering for this solicitation this year. So the state matched us, uh, on this effort. And my hope is that with, um, some good outcomes, we can see some more funding. Yeah, but it was incredibly successful. And we'll be happy to share the, the summation report with the council. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Great, can we give a round of applause for both of them? Thank you. Um, there, I'm noticing a lot of people running out to the restroom. Do you want to take a break now or how is everyone feeling? Still stay at 10?
I'm there.
Are you there? All right, so it looks like, Paul, are we doing you starting the next section? You're listed first in this area for unfunded capital improvements?
All right, let's see what we got here. Um, again, um, as part of the capital improvement, um, retreat that we had, uh, earlier in, in April, um, to give you a very large list of projects that we're doing in the next five years. But there was also a significant list of projects that are unfunded. And these are just the total amounts for each program of each unfunded capital improvement programs. So we're going to be going through, um, different, uh, different projects. And have the different program representatives come out and talk about their first lines.
Fantastic. Thank you. Please, Paul.
So we'll have the fires.
Great, geez. Let's give Paul a round of applause.
Yeah, those chuckle at the ball, because, you know, he's like, we need to come up. And I realized that was the very next slide. So I apologize. These, uh, fire department, I think, has got some really great news. We read that this morning associating with the possibility of, uh, a congressional, um, contribution towards power share.
Yes.
Of, uh, the relocation of Fire Station 6, which is anticipated because of damage. And so, uh, assuming that the calm was forward, that's what it was. Um, and then the John Wesley Tower growth corridor is, uh, really probably the the plans are going to come in on it. But this is the next large, maybe last large growth area in the city, unless government holdings, kind of, wasn't, we see more project lines develop. But it's really, um, an important project. Uh, we have been doing some preliminary work on that to cite it. Completed that work, kind of, as you all recall, with a little bit of question about where the John Wesley Tower timing would be. It's been resolved. We have a sense of where that station will go now. Um, it is identified in the, uh, infrastructure improvement plan. And so we will continue to collect impact fees towards that. Although we don't know that, uh, they will be sufficient at this point. And probably likely not. Uh, so, uh, we'll continue to, um, develop that project. And, um, that will be driven by adjacent private development, home building most. Um, the additional projects, new administrative space, city managers ask us to leave.
Hard again. I remembered exactly, you know, so. That seems to be, you know, the conversation went like this. Hey, chief, you really need more administrative space, don't you? And then he said, yes. The, uh, the narrative frankly is, uh, and many people in this room know this, including capital projects and city engineering and community development and human resources. Uh, we're, we're very, uh, tight at City Hall, especially downstairs. I think stuff heard we're, we're making, doing with, with space in a very good way. Downstairs, getting very creative, a lot of cubicles being brought in, which is great. But looking ahead, we think there's sense to having, especially as we're talking about two of the fire stations here over time, that it may make sense to have, uh, yeah, what is that? To have a fire administration, uh, have its own space. Uh, we love having you downstairs. Uh, it is a very good fit, but we're, uh, this is also the realm of space management and space analysis. And we never told you to leave. Tony appeared.
It was just a joke. We are. Most of, most of the services, uh, represented by the president down at City Hall are just chapped out and need more space. And so we certainly, uh, um, if the fire department administration can be relocated and create space for everybody else as well as suits the needs of our advantage needs. We are currently already living in, we have not a single available sit-down workspace at Fire Admin in City Hall. Um, expansion projects to existing fire stations to accommodate apparatus staff needs and body and throat. So we have the, uh, some standards of cover analysis that we're experiencing and have done because of the increased density that's occurred within cities. Some of the firehouses, we downshift units. Unfortunately, both of the firehouses were not built to accommodate much more than what we have now. And so that means, and the good news is, um, at least three of the fire stations were built with a facade that was intended for the expand. So that is good news. Um, but as you might know, anytime you're back in Japan building, um, it's, it's a financial premium. So we're, we're, uh, we have a number of places to do that. Second, uh, second staff ladder, a second battalion. There is some coordination to go. There may be some relief that could be created by a chain of the power facility. Fire station, the completion of fire training facility, that facility was never too big. During the implementation of the bond, it created a number of the fire stations we currently have in the fire training facility. It was at the height of the great recession and cost was just escalating. And a lot of scope, you know, a lot of locations had to be cut and implemented that bond. And so the training facility is a trailer and multiple series of trailers. And they're getting rather old in the ability to build those permanent facilities. Particularly since Black Staff has emerged as a regional training center as well. So we're looking to try to complete that. New wildfire management, when we built the wildfire management program under the new fee, it allowed us to take seasonal staffing and convert those to a full-time, year-round restoration force, restoration. We're in a historic rock house on airport ramp. Completely inadequate for what we're doing. Director Helmig, who I think is still on a job for a little bit, a few more hours, more hours. It would benefit the overall success of the airport if that were relocated. Our function were relocated away and give them a more adequate place to file its fire operations. It can be in a number of locations, be adjacent, included in a J W Powell project. You can locate them there as well, but it's inadequate and we need to move towards a long-term solution. And the advent of a separate revenue stream may assist us in that. We haven't talked a lot about what kind of debt we might be able to incur with that new fund. But the planning for that needs to be. So those are the unfunded fire projects.
Chief, we heard earlier this morning, another one of the federal direct appropriations was, I thought, for wildfire training. Can you comment on that? Because that was a bit of good news.
Yes, it was really good news. It's very aggressive and ambitious project that we will offer. What it is, Trex plan, Trex training, Trex is for spread fire. And so as we know, and as you all know, in our restoration efforts, the first thing we do is we reduce the fuel. Then we come back and then that generally equates to fuel thinning, that generally equates to pile burning. And then the last step of the restoration effort is putting fire on the ground and letting it go through the landscape. And Trex is that information exchange where you get together with people that need to do this restoration of folks from around the country. And it's just high-level training exchange so that we can advance that effort. And in the hosting of a Trex event like this, it brings a lot of resources down and creates a lot of internal expertise and capacity that we need if we're going to do that efficiently.
Let me have a moment. I think this is the right time to just challenge assumptions a little bit. And I'm sure this isn't going to go anywhere, but it's the right space to do it in. And I just wanted to get it at due diligence. So fire station number six. I spent quite a bit of time over there, right? I gave it a good hard look recently. And the notion that it can't be expanded is just something I want to sit with for a moment. Engineering-wise, I'm sure maybe it doesn't work out, but I just wanted to lift it up. There is space there. There's a retention basin or a part of that floodway. There's a bunch of ponderous trees built up in that area. It seems to me that it would be difficult to expand fire station in that footprint. But within the realm of possibility, if we're already moving that ones and putting bridges over railroad tracks, it seems to me that where there is a will, there's a way. Maybe it's cost prohibitive, maybe there's other concerns, maybe because of the ladder trucks. It's just even with the extra space, the footprint's not right. But I just wanted to lift that up. Has anyone looked at the engineering possibilities for expanding that space? Or has there just largely been an assumption that we, well, this is impractical, so we're going to look elsewhere? And I mostly ask out of the lens of sustainability and just due diligence there.
We've dealt with diligence on that. We find a number of issues that become creative. The size, it's about three quarters of an acre. That's the actual size. It actually appears larger. That parcel is, that parcel becomes a part of open space. And there are deep restrictions that don't allow us to approach on that at all. The site, because of its configuration, three quarter, I mean, if you take a look in there, we can just get an engine on a turning region, get into that apparatus base. It is prohibited for a ladder truck to get that done. And so I would tend to agree with you. If money's not an object, we can engineer anything. Money's an object. So we kind of have to rule that out, just in the context of we're extremely concerned about what the costs are going to be going into construction right now. You know, we were using eight hundred dollars a square foot estimates and we're concerned that it may be in that. And so when we begin to go with engineering, find solutions to work with a challenged site, it's driving costs. We came to conclusion elsewhere nearby.
Wonderful. Thank you for the response. You know, just from a naked eye gentleman's view, it looks like there's possibilities there. I just wanted to check that box.
I had that naked eye view myself until we began looking.
There. Question. Okay, great. Shall we give a round of applause?
Morning, Dan Mossman with the police department. Our needs are a little bit simpler and we're just going to focus on our main priority. Our overall, we have, I think, three projects on the unfunded list. One was the expansion of the police administrative facility on Sawmill. The other was a roof replacement to the facility on Sawmill. That roof is 23 years old. We patched it a couple of times and it's holding. So that used to be a higher priority. It's fallen just a little bit. Our biggest priority is a need for a large garage with three or four storage bays on site. So this is our bomb squad truck worth a couple thousand dollars and it's sitting outside getting weathered. And it's got some stuff in it that really should be secured anyway. We don't agree with the fire department on everything, but the officers really like their garage. It has doors on either end. So you can drive that vehicle in, plug it in, keep it warm, keep everything secure. And then when a call happens, open that outside door and be right out on the city street cable to respond. The other vehicle like this is our SWAT vehicle and it's also a $50,000 vehicle. And we'd like to have it on site too. Currently, we usually house them at the commerce yard, which is five miles away from our police station. So if there's a SWAT call, people either respond directly if they're already on patrol and have their gear with them. But they're coming from home, sometimes they have to come by the police station, grab their gear and then drive another five miles out to the commerce yard to get loaded up in the truck to go on calls. So our biggest priority is getting a facility of that size on the site. The law enforcement administrative site on Sawmill. We are in talks with the sheriff's department because it's a co-located site. And they're also trying to expand the search and rescue building and we're just, we're kind of running out of space. But we'd really like to have this building close so we can have those resources close. And then the third vehicle we want to put, and there's our incident command vehicle, which is still being built. And then the idea surfaced for a board bay from our criminal investigations division. Sometimes they have to do search warrants on cars. If you've ever tried to do a search warrant on a car during a sideways snowstorm, it sounds turned out the best. It's better to secure that vehicle for chain in custody, have it inside. It's just a lot more productive and a lot more comfortable to do. So that would be our request for the future unfunded. If we can find some funds to meet that, I think it's just.
Clarification, Chief. You mentioned that with the bomb squad vehicle and also your SWAT vehicle. You said two to three thousand dollars, but to me that sounds like maybe there should be another couple of zeros.
That is the cost of the vehicles, the cost of the building, the building will be a lot more than that's insurance.
Two to three thousand?
The cost of building, the building is not a million, but the cost of the vehicle. Yeah, two to three thousand, I think. I could be off a little bit. I didn't pull those in. They were very expensive.
You mean a hundred thousand?
Yes, a hundred thousand.
That was a two zero. We can move to asking point then.
I almost had the money to tattle.
Thank you for the clarification. We're good.
Thank you.
Okay. Hey, so. Here, the next presentation is going to take a little bit more than the five minutes before break. Do you want to break for now?
I have a question. This might be a good time for it if we're changing subjects. Greg, this might be for you. Scott, it might be for you. In terms of unfunded future projects, I'm very curious about City Hall. I don't know if that building is aging well, if there are needs internally where space could be rearranged. I know that building is a real headache in the winter with snow and ice falling. I'm just wondering if there are any plans in the near or midterm future for upgrades or redesign of City Hall, interior, exterior, and where that is on the budget landscape. I'll talk about that for a minute. I know the building's leaking pretty badly, even though repairs were just done, et cetera.
And before we hear from Scott, I just want to preface by first thanking you for the question. And second, noting, we have a facilities team that is representative of the entire organization and a lot of thought is going into all of the facilities, Scott.
I'm going to offer up, we are actually the next slide. So we just want to stay in, we got to come back to your question. I believe I'm up next and I'll talk, actually.
Yeah. Thank you for your question.
Like to break now?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have a 15-minute break or just a few minutes more. We'll come back at 10:15. There are a lot of names under the unfunded capital projects for presentations. If you have not yet gone, if you could please just check in with me during the break, let me know about how much time you need for your presentation. That'll help me plan. Thank you very much. Enjoy the break. All right, welcome back from break. So just a few updates about the agenda. We're going to get started again with Scott Overton. We have about 45 minutes of presentations, not including questions left in the future planning agenda item. And it looks like we're running about 30 minutes ahead of schedule at the moment. So for that, without further ado, let's play one more quick round of Let's Settle It. I'm anticipating an even split here, so I'm inviting people online to make sure you raise your digital hands or put into the chat box and perhaps something can help me count those up. Are you ready? Okay, the question is crunchy or smooth peanut butter? Crunchy or smooth peanut butter? So if you are willing to vote for crunchy, please raise your hand. Crunchy or smooth peanut butter? Crunchy right now. One online? About 20. Okay, you don't get to vote twice, Nicole. All right, now smooth. Raise your hand for smooth. Oh, crunchy wins. It's settled. Crunchy peanut butter. All right, without. Without further ado, Scott Overton, can you kick us off, please? Yes?
I'm the next slide. Want me on this one too?
Yeah, why don't we do a tag team on this?
Rebecca, you might have input on this first one as well, if you'd like. Council, we approached this at the earlier retreat and there was great discussion. And from that discussion, a couple of outcomes. One, we heard counsel that there was interest in this, some enthusiasm. But the directive to staff was to meet with the neighborhood association and start vetting this there locally. And also to look, in addition to the STEAM idea, to look at other possible uses for what might be a multi-use facility. So we've done that, Rebecca and Scott and I and who else is with us? Amy, thank you. Thanks, Amy. We were, we went out to Sunnyside and met with the neighborhood group. They were very, it was a well-received presentation. Since then, they have been meeting. They formed a subcommittee. There's a lot of vetting going on and it's happening as we speak. The support for the project is quite high and I think council has been receiving emails on that and every now and then public comments to the same. I think it's not yet known what the neighborhood association will come back with in terms of desired uses of this facility. But I think we can assume that a STEAM facility in some sort of neighborhood gathering place will be high on that list. But I do think at this point, there's overwhelming support and consensus that this should happen. The building should happen. And we likewise, at the staff level, would like to suggest that this project move forward. But this is one that's for you, before you now, for some quick discussion or conventional discussions. You would like to see if we should move forward. So I'll just put the question out directly. To make this happen, it would be a reallocation of the $2.4 million that is currently unencumbered in the general fund. That was money received through the federal government for reimbursement for revenue losses during COVID. We think this is a good fit for that funding and probably we could get this completed for that amount or very close to it. The rendering that you see does not have to be the final design. The neighborhood association has given some feedback. They like the footprint. The mural remains as is in some way detached from the building perhaps. But that, I think there's a desire to see that preserved. Scott, with respect to the bricks and mortar aspect of this, do you want to share the comments you had?
No, I think you said, well, we are at conceptual design has been completed, the renderings are completed and the initial concept is completed, but we are in a holding pattern at this point. Soliciting some feedback as we get it, but our next step would be more of a formalized feedback process, incorporating those comments into possible changes. And we would start moving towards a design contract for construction documents to go to build. So we're not at the build stage yet, but our next step would be to go to final design and assign project management and move it towards reality. So I think for us, I don't really want to go to that step if we're not going to build the project. There's no sense of just getting that design done and putting it on a shelf. So that's really, I think, the main question that this budget process is. Are we ready to move forward? And if we are, we'll start working that design a little bit more earnestly. If your preference is done at this time, we'll just put it on hold a little bit.
Thank you. We'll go to you, council member, from the card there. I do want to note another aspect of this project which I overlooked, period, the public restrooms. Rebecca and Amy have been at the table advocating for public restrooms to accompany the plain all field that is there and gets highly used. So there's a very heart-centric, pro-centric feature of this as well. heart-centric, pro-centric feature of this as well. Councilmember.
Thank you, Greg. I like this project and I think at some point we need to go ahead. But from what I understand, we have two or three million dollars of discretionary money that we could spend one way or the other. I think what we should do today is make a list of things like this, and this should be definitely on that list. And then after we go over all of the other maybes, then we can say, well, if these ten maybes, these are the ones I wanted to. That's my opinion. I think it's premature to say yes or no on this until we've gone through the whole list.
Understood, and thank you for the comments. I do want to, and I'll get right to you, Councilmember Matthew, because we want to make mention. The genesis for this goes back to the city council three years ago.
I remember that.
Okay. That's that's how it started. I just wanted to point that out. So I mean, staff's kind of running with this thing, but it's you know, a project that we were, that was identified a few years ago.
Again, if we only have two or three million of discretionary money, this one won't race to the top, but it might not. And I think later today we can make that decision.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And just to add on to what Councilmember McCarthy said, are these, I mean, we could just continue to add projects, wish lists. It could just go a mile long. Are the three that I'm seeing here the ones that have had the most interest as a plate where we've identified or are they separate?
Oh.
I'm trying to.
Foundation for Senior Living and Old Courthouse. I'll talk more about those. Those are not. Those are at various levels, but they're not anything at the moment that's going to require expenditures of three separate.
So because I I really support the Sunnyside. This project, I think, Sunnyside, we've benefited greatly by having such a shot in the arm with that. But to Councilmember McCarthy's point, I'm just not aware of just anything else that has been talked about. I know if we've put it out there, everybody lined up at the podium and say, well, what about this? We need to do this. This has been identified three years ago. It seems to me the logical one to do and to use that money on just as long as there's not another one that has piqued so much interest before. Because we have a lot of neighborhoods that have needs, I'm sure. Does that make sense? I mean, I would love to just move forward with this, but then I'd hate to get a phone call or a hundred emails saying, oh, my gosh, we've been waiting for X project for ten years and why didn't you consider it?
Understood, and thank you for that. With that in question, we are going to move on to comment.
More of a comic question is like, is this, is there others that have came out prior?
I don't think there are any other projects that are as well formulated as this one right now. This is, I'm going to Scott's comments kind of shovel ready once we we get the final design. But I also want to be candid in saying that I'm sure there's a long list of projects throughout there. If we were to do some sort of solicitation, my guess is you would have a lot of stuff coming in on that.
And I don't support soliciting for more.
Yeah.
At this point. Because I just, I didn't hope there was, being new on council. I don't know if I've not been aware of other projects that have had this interest. I know for me, this has a lot of interest and I'd like to see it move forward.
And thank you. The other project I'll mention is the Works Organic. It's not as far along on this. The council recently approved, this council approved to the conceptual plan on that. Rebecca and her team did had a one-year community vetting with a lot of public forums and input on that. But that's a project that will take years to to see materialize. Both, I mentioned that because both projects are basically repurposing old city facilities that are not currently being used, at least in the most beneficial way.
It'll be more than cheap.
Definitely. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you for the question. Councilmember, how?
Yeah, I very much support this and, you know, we chatted yesterday about just the interesting conversations that have come up since the last time we talked about this at one of our earlier budget meetings. And from my recollection, at least when we talked about that, it was specifically struck forward as reappropriating that two point four million for this project. So while I I understand the desire to see like a full list and go through that process, as Councilmember McCarthy proposed, I would be worried about the prospect of then going back on kind of what we talked about before, which was specifically this project. And I think that we have now, as a result of that initial conversation, raised the community awareness and interest in this specific one to a point where that would be very contentious as well, to then go back and say, well, thanks for all your input, but now we're going to put this money somewhere else. That I I don't know that that would be a great idea. That said, I do remember during that conversation being one of those that was asking for us to go specifically to the Sunnyside Neighborhood Association and ask for their thoughts and input. And I think that we've heard very resoundingly the support for this project and the input that they put into it. So I'd love to see us move forward on this.
Thank you. Yes, please, Councilmember, speak.
And I too, I appreciate what you're saying. That I'm ready to move this forward. It's shovel ready. It's an important project. Keep talking about it. I'm I'm excited to see.
Well, even if it went through it on this, I'd probably come to the same conclusion, but I'm not there yet. Even though I anticipate I would be.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the comment, Councilmember. Yes.
I too would be in favor of moving this forward for a lot of different reasons. One of the things that we're trying to do as a city and a community is we're trying to get input on all the stuff that we do. And one of the ways that we can do that is taking it to communities. And so some communities don't come down to City Hall to say anything about anything because of a whole bunch of different reasons. But knowing, but seeing the Murdock Center and how much participation we have had because we sit in a community, it's just been, I mean, it's it's been amazing to see all the input that comes with that. So I think having a building where it's open and available and people are using it, you can use it to put information out, all kinds of things. So we get more than just a building. We get a, we get community input. And so for for that's my biggest reason is providing the space for community to give us input about what we're doing as a city.
Thank you, Councilmember. Murdock Center is just a wonderful venue. Wonderful venue, yes, please.
Just as a quick follow-up, I think the Murdock Center is excellent knowledge. And when this gets built, I think we we have a secondary decision. Is it going to be like the Murdock Center where it's available for a variety of things? Or is it going to be filled up with one thing that would prevent it from being used for writing things like the Murdock Center issue used now? Thank you.
Thank you.
I thank you too much, Doman.
That's the purpose of these retreats. We welcome the dialogues. So thank you. Mayor and Vice Mayor. Oh, okay. So. Thank you. We're we're hearing consensus and it's exciting for us to have that input from council and to see this possibility ultimately become a reality. It'll be a fun project. May I move on? The Foundation for Senior Living is a project that council received updates on. I have not been very closely involved in this, but I've been a little bit more on on the periphery. Others can speak to it more eloquently. But it's it's an existing project that has yet to be built. The, there's been a number of attempts to by the developer, private developer. And by the way, as background, you know, this is a senior housing project largely that will occupy what is the old school facility up there, the Capes School. And it's, the city's involvement has been to retain or have built some parking spaces. Right now, we're using the old circus parking lot there. But eventually a structured facility that would include a couple of floors of parking that will accommodate our new courthouse. So it's very important and we have most of the the funding already set aside for this. That was the discussion last year with council at this time. The the project developer has been seeking tax credits. They are currently doing that again. We submitted some support letters on that. Stay tuned. This is really just kind of an update on that. Michelle, I don't know if is there anything that needs to be added that I might have missed and if so, you can come on up or.
Before that, we have a question online by.
Please.
Yes, sir. He's calling us in the e-session.
Oh. Is this something else?
No, not calling you in the e-session. Good morning, Mayor and Council, and thank you all for thank you whoever noticed my hand raised. I just couldn't see in the chat also. But I back to, I've had it raised for a little while, back to the old fire station in Sunnyside. I I heard a couple of things about the uses, potential uses. Just be aware that at some point, we don't need an e-session right now, but at some point legal would need to update the current council as we did previous councils with respect to the use of that facility based on where it's located. That's all I needed to drop in there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sterling. Much appreciated. Sorry, we didn't catch your.
No, I'm sorry. I can't be there with you. I wish I could have, but next week. We'll see you then.
Looking forward to. So any questions on the Foundation for Senior Living? We're in a bit of a holding pattern on this. It's an exciting project. I characterize it as a public-private partnership. The facility, as I mentioned, will be largely affordable housing for seniors. Bike mayor, the parking part of this, I believe, is would be designed in a way that could be repurposed if that was ever a desire. So I think we're checking a lot of boxes on this. Okay. Old courthouse property. And I might invite Michelle to come up and we have a couple of slides later, but I was so good. I don't need to speak wrong, Daniel. It's perfect. Thank you.
For the next slide, are we we know who is the presenting for the next slide?
What is the next slide?
Scott Overton, yes. And she does.
It's design ready, not shovel ready. There's a few steps in between. So it was a great question before the brave Vice Mayor came up with it. Actually, as you remember, we're building kind of these slides as a staff. We're going to hear from a lot of different divisions about things that aren't. Some are unfunded, some are just continued needs and how we chisel away to them through our budgeting process. But there are a couple here that have come from late for facilities in particular, and I have a couple of slides. And one is the larger capital renewal program. And as a small team in facilities, we've been working through that facilities advisory committee. And we've been doing a much better job of trying to deliver smaller projects. But we also recognize that beyond painting this room or working on a roof, we've also got some bigger projects, and these are the larger capital renewal projects. I kind of stole a term that FUSD has been using. It's more of a major life cycle project. So these are the things that you might be speaking to, a major remodel at City Hall where you're really updating the entire facility or a new roof on City Hall is in the millions of dollars. Each facility across the organization has these large systems needs. The siding on this building is a fairly significant project that we're actually getting ready to undertake this next year. But it's a large building envelope project that eats up a lot of annual capacity. So we are starting to get into these conversations where as we score buildings and we see large roof systems, large sightings, large window projects, they're getting to be so large that they are difficult to fund on the annual basis. We find ourselves either carefully moving forward, funds, or trying to bundle projects. But I think we are at a point as a city where a number of our facilities have come to a place in their life where it's starting to add up. So we will likely need to start to identify these really big life scale projects and bundle them in a way to address those larger needs. And in addition, there are a couple that we don't always talk about. The parking lots, the landscape, common areas, things that really aren't an annual budget item, but we know are coming towards end of the library parking lot, things that add up in a hurry, but aren't really in the streets program, for example. So we are now including that in our facilities renewal program. But we're going to have to likely have a discussion about what it would look like if we used a different funding source. And you're actually going to get into that this afternoon a little bit. And this would be one I would recommend from a public works perspective to keep on your radar. It's a core service and you're right, at some point, all your facilities need refresh and just life cycle projects. Also best use of space and efficiency. So we found that, you know, what we built in nineteen seventies and the eighties isn't quite the same as we built today. So are we going to build a new building or are we going to renovate space we already have? Those are some of the conversations we'd like to have. Did that answer your question a little bit about City Hall and kind of that bigger life scale part? Do you have one in particular?
Just in general terms, you know, I don't plan on being around long enough to enjoy the new amenities over there, you know, on a ten to twenty year horizon. That building needs a lot of work. It'd be nice if it was an exemplary or an example of efficiency and sustainability and some sort of certification. It should be reoriented so that we don't have employees spending three months of the year outside cursing the sidewalk and the steps. There's all sorts of things that that could be done better with that space and it is a flagship space. It's the face and the identity of not just city, not just the municipality, but you know, city council, mayor, or office space. It'd be nice if we each had our own little cubicle there instead of just, you know, a conference room. It's really just a big vending machine for us. And you know, et cetera. So if there's space on the horizon to be thinking about how to repurpose and just reimagine City Hall, it's an interesting conversation. But it's maybe it's, this is the time to bring it up, but it's not the time to dive into the weeds.
Yeah. I I think it's a great suggestion to keep in mind, as you said, amongst our dozens of buildings, we come to this conclusion with city buildings and facilities community wide. So the complex did indeed, the new courthouse clearly replaced a dated facility that was not feeding their needs, the new core services facility in twenty eighteen. Fire station relocation program. I mean, throughout the decades, that, in my opinion, is exactly what elected bodies do, is you forecast where you want to go with it and then try to figure that out. In the past, it's been a lot of new buildings. They've been at that point. But we have not done that analysis on whether we would remodel that facility or, you know, is the cost benefit just better to rework it? Or just build another facility? We've not gone through that effort, but.
I certainly want to advocate change locations. Nice spot.
Agreed. Beautiful spots. Agreed. But yeah, you're thinking big picture. I get it. I get it. And that's a nineteen eighty-two building, if I recall. So it's due. Lots of competing values. Another one that we really have seen the impact of in particular the last couple of years is the loss of city space for storage. None of us like to store, but here's the reality. We need to have some storage. Holiday displays, property surplus, furnishings, attic stock, old products, inventory. Every division has a storage need of some sort. General storage seems to be where we are most lacking. We have lost what we were utilizing at the Thorpe Park Annex Site. We now Thorpe Park, we have lost the Phoenix project now to the DCC or the Phoenix Building. We have one small remaining spot left on downtown. It's that warehouse, the Phoenix warehouse, not the Phoenix warehouse, it's the Coconino Warehouse for some archive storage. And then PD has a crammed full storage, a large warehouse space out on Commerce. But industrial storage space is becoming short-lived. We have vehicle storage needs, product needs, backstock needs, and then things, items like shovels and volunteer stuff. Open space has a pile of stuff. So whether we're going to build this space or rent this space in the future, I think it will kind of come up as it is a lacking need. But pretty essential. It's like having a garage. But pretty essential. It's like having a garage. That is the last of my slides for facilities. Courthouse site redevelopment.
Michelle McNulty, the funding director. So I'm going to give you an update on the old courthouse site redevelopment. I'm going to start talking a little bit, I'm going to hold up the downtown vision. It was initiated in 2018 and really meant to be kind of a guiding document for unified vision for downtown. Identify catalytic sites as well as kind of guide development rather than have reactionary development applications come in and have the community react to them. That is a partnership between the Downtown Business Association, they're leading the managing the contract and the process. But with the partnership between the city, the county, and Mountain Line. That project, that plan is not yet finalized, but I do have a schedule to update you on that. But one of the sites that's been identified as a catalytic site is the old courthouse site, which is currently just east of City Hall, used for parking. It's been identified for being a mixed use, providing commercial, maybe hotels, grocery stores, retail, as well as residential and parking as part of kind of the overall parking for downtowns. But for, there is a lot of interest from surrounding property owners, kind of us, you know, potential for that site. But before anything can really happen, we have to finalize that downtown vision. So currently, you know, it started right before COVID, which really kind of slowed some things down. And then there were some changes at the county, and so we had to kind of pause and work with them to get their new vision for what they see, their county buildings downtown. And so right now, those changes are with Puma, who is the consultant, and they're incorporating all of that. Once we get those changes back, we're going to take the plan back to the steering committee, who kind of started working with the project and the marriage beginning, get their feedback on where the plan has gone. And then we'll take it back out to the public to get that final input and feedback. There is a work session planned with city council for a much more in-depth overview of what the background of that project, as well as where we're at. It's scheduled for June 26th, so hopefully you have fun, I hope, to start your wait waiting with. And then we hope to be back when you come back from break with a final product to ask for your approval. Once the plan is approved, shortly after, we'd like to actually start the formal solicitation. It is city property, so we can't just enter into agreement with anybody. That needs to be a fair process. So that could be either an RFP or an RSQ, that to be determined. And really, that's it. We just wanted to give you a heads up that we're out with everything.
So, and again, I'm new on council, so I've missed a lot of the dialogues here. But one of the common complaints I have heard from our community is that one council says, we're going to do this with this project, and this is, and they get community support, and then five or whatever years later, we don't follow with that, and we do something totally different. And this courthouse site has came up a lot when I'm out in the community, already complaining that we were told this was going to be a parking structure. And like every, this is the majority that I hear from. And like everything else, council never falls through on what they've committed to. And I don't know if that was through a voter, you know, vote or whatever, but I just want to bring that to present because I hear that awful lot, the distrust. And it comes from just having a different council when it finally comes, you know, up for, to take that next step. But I think it's important for us, the new council, at least for me, to know what was promised or sold to the community when we were building the new courthouse so that when we're making decisions, we can factor that in. Because for me, it's important to recognize and identify prior commitments. So we're not making decisions without that knowledge and then continuing this distrust of the communities.
Appreciate that feedback, and we'll make sure that's part of our presentation in June 27th, that that history is in there. But I will tell you that the conversation so far, but it would likely very much of this project would include some form of a parking structure, plus a lot more added community benefits. So thank you for that. Yes.
It's important for councils not to tie the hands of other councils. And so I think that when we all take these roles, I'm hoping that we're thinking about that. With that being said, the city is growing, things are changing, it's living, it's not stagnant. And so one of the things that I try and do when I'm out there talking to the public is to try and help them see how we're changing and how we're growing. And what we decided yesterday, something has happened to maybe we decide something different today. And so that's got to be okay. Otherwise, we're going to just stay stuck. Now, when we do promise voters something, either on a bond or whatever, then yeah, we ought to follow through on that. But if it's a conversation that another council has had, and maybe we've decided now, if this council, that maybe we're not going to do that because of this. I think those are two separate things, and we need to keep those things separate. And so let's just see kind of where we go and see what happens. But if there was no bond associated to this, and if we didn't promise them something, then I think everything's kind of open. That's just my two cents.
Not to go too far down this rabbit hole, but the representation that was made was tied to a bond measure. The material was in the information pamphlet that went out in advance of that and was premised upon a partnership with the county for a new court facility. That ultimately did not happen. So the city went alone in its facility. That's now built, beautiful courthouse. But that representation has still been out there in the form of that information pamphlet. And the previous councils have wrestled with this quite a bit because, going back to council member Matthew's comments, that there's public perception out there. And in this case, the perception has written text to support it. And it's something we all need to be mindful of. We easily could explain how things changed on the eve of that ballot approval that that happened, but it's complicated. And there you have it. I do, I will echo what Michelle stated, though. And we hear loudly from the Downtown Business Association, they want to see parking here in some way, shape, or form. But I think with the vision plan that's forthcoming, the idea of having parking integrated into a multi-use facility that checks a lot of boxes is probably what's going to come to the table for consideration. Because even the downtown vision, as the drafts that we have seen, they are no longer embracing the idea of a big parking structure as a centralized feature downtown, but rather more dispersed parking done in conjunction with other uses. So I just wanted to give a little more backdrop to that. Thank you for the comments.
To piggyback off of that, I came in in 2018. One of the first things I remember big of all then is these parking conversations with downtown and the space, and there was going to be a charrette. I believe maybe Dan can speak to that. You don't really have to. We don't have to go back that far in history. But that was tabled. And there's a lot of controversy around the parking. And correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but I think one of the things that came out of that is the Foundation for Senior Living and the conversation you just brought to us about parking is wrapped up in that as part of the solution to those early dialogues. So yeah, that parking conversation persists to this day. I think it's evolved into this multi-footprint strategy that everybody seems to be fairly excited about. So just wanted to get up to speed on that.
And you came up, but I see Dan walking up. One of the things that downtown vision is kind of the response to that idea of having a charrette.
Yeah.
This is the community's response, this is the city's response to that. So this lack of that, that unifying vision for all of downtown.
And I just wanted to add.
Exactly.
Okay.
Kind of shifted from charrette to participating in the downtown vision.
I think that what I'd like to see is us just being careful in our language, you know, when we're doing a project because it does evolve over time. It's been so long time to get these things, you know, shoveled to the ground. And so I think that we would do our future council a service by making sure we're using language that is not so detrimental to something, understanding that things evolve to say, this is what we see as a potential for that space. And so the expectation is that, that, okay, today we like that, but in 10 years, you're right, our needs have changed. And I just, I think it would be great if we would be more mindful of the language.
I'll be brief, because again, this is coming back in June. But I think if we did a mixed use project with some parking, some commercial, possibly some residential, I think we would be meeting our commitments and doing what is good for our downtown, for our community, and for, you know, the idea of higher density, walkable neighborhoods. But I completely agree with what Ms. Maxine she said also.
Tell back to follow.
Oh, it's lunchtime.
We're going to talk about girls' softball complex. This is a, this slide is about a design build of a girls' youth softball complex at Continental Park. And we talked about it in our Capitol treat. We build it, it's a big job. It achieves, I mean, Jason mentioned this earlier this morning, this would achieve ecotourism and fulfill a large vacancy within our system that we have within pros. Obviously, it promotes a safe and healthy community, and, you know, just want to give that tidbit with that big shift for the pros division with BDB rep capital funds. We do have this planned out, at least the design of a complex. And we'll get whatever development we can out of it, too, but that's in future years. That's, I believe, starting in fiscal year '26 through '28. So this is just a plan to see in case this is something else to contribute funds to or push up in some way or some fashion. Any questions on the girls' softball complex?
That's absolutely gorgeous. You can go there, right? I would just go and just hang out. Oh, yes, the girls play, right?
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I've asked this before, but remind me, and just an opportunity for further discussion on the topic. How much of this is in the floodplain? And then my other question, just something I always want to keep a close on, is the nighttime lighting and dark skies adherence. And I know there's rings of. There's different parameters for different distances away from Naval Observatory. We sort of have a map on that. And I would just challenge all of us to keep flagstaff as dark as possible, even extending further up into where some of those restrictions get lifted a little bit, just to stay on the side of being ahead of things as future growth puts light-dome pressures on our community. So if you could just speak to those two things briefly, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. So that, the rest of Continental Park, a regional park, it's roughly 85 acres, is on the floodplain. It basically extends from I-40 south to the existing Continental Park, which is by baseball, or four baseball fields, one softball field, and then down to the bottomless pit, which in during the snowmelt, we found the bottom of the bottomless pit. So it's all there. So we would need to work with our stormwater partners in figuring out how we raise the base elevation and work within those parameters on what's enabled in a floodplain. Fields are usually a great example.
I think it's a great piece of space.
Exactly. And yet in regard to dark skies, we would always have to meet dark skies compliance. There are lights out there on those five fields today, and I think the lighting is becoming dramatically better every year that comes by. The lighting that I've seen lately, it would, I think, blow everyone out of the water. It won't even compare to what's there existing. But you are correct. I think we're fairly far away in this location from some of those envelopes with Naval Observatory on that, so.
But I would like to honor those.
Absolutely.
Possible regardless.
Always, yes.
Michelle.
Of course.
I was hoping you would. Dark sky lighting, I'll give you an update on that. So we actually have standards for outdoor recreation fields. We've gotten rid of lighting zone three, so this park is now in lighting zone two. And again, we would comply with our own standards. We have one specific for outdoor recreation with the maximum buildings and hours of operation in central. Thanks, Dan.
Any other questions on girls' softball? I'm false.
41, I'm Robert. I'm the supervisor. The goal of this project is to work towards configuring a mountain space system. Our current open space is pretty well distributed throughout the community. In the east, we have Picture Canyon. More central, McMillan makes it just stop in the Buffalo Park area. And the west, we have Observatory Basin, that's where we do. So this project would help improve connections and access to our current open spaces and also to our regional land manager partners. Of course, internally, our partners with the city such as parks, through connections to Buffalo Park, where the county, connections down to Fort Tuff Hill, and then of course, our federal partners, the authorities as well. It would also look at providing better access throughout the community. We have a 10-minute access blocking time goal for the community that's aligned with parks and channels. So providing for that access from no matter where you live within the community. And currently, we lack some access and open space in the quadrant of flights that are generally sitting down here. So we would look at acquiring some additional open space for those living in south of the I-40 region of flights. This has been an important project for the Open Spaces Commission in the community. And we think that it does meet a number of PDB goals, such as supporting environmental justice, to help provide equal distribution of open space throughout the community and equal access as well. It helps promote healthy lifestyles. If you look at research from other cities that have well-dispersed access and open space, their health tends to be greater. And we do think that it will help towards protect environmental properties, viewshed, and wildlife resources that really help in our community. No questions?
I'm glad you mentioned wildlife corridors, because I think that can be forgotten so easily by the fact that they're important. So thank you for bringing that up.
On this comment, well, this is always an expensive proposition. But I think acquisition of further open space is a really responsible way for us to be stewards of our future, our future generations, and it's a responsibility that we have that we should not shy away from. Dan.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. We wanted to just bring to your attention, this has been actually going on for quite some time, the splice-up library, the space in the building that we're at from Cooper Union College. And Lynda Tilson, our new library director, recently met with the new president of CCC. And shockingly, he mentioned it into her that they would be, at some time, would love to take their space back. They feel like their programming is getting very extensive, and they need their space. We currently lease 10,000 square feet from them, so that is not something we can just do tomorrow. So we reached back to the president and said. So that is not something we can just do tomorrow. So, uh, we reached back to the president and said, like, how soon? Because our lease comes up July of 2024. And he basically wouldn't want to headline the paper that he picked out the library. But I will say that, um, I think I'd like us to be actively working on it. So we have, uh, connected library Tilson, uh, wait, wait, Linda Tilson. Seriously.
I know.
I don't know what's up. I'm on a laborer, but that's it. So, um, we had connected Linda with John Saltstall, our business retention expansion manager, to start looking at some places that the library could go. But ideally, um, library in, in the future, the reason why they're only unfunded is the project would be that we would ideally love to have a standalone East Flagstaff Library. And we ideally would like to go from 10,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet. That library is very small. And they're basically busting at the seams as it is. There's such a need over there on the east side that we would love to have, um, it would never be the size of our main library, but of course, would love to have a better library situation. So we just wanted to kind of put that on your, um, radar in that we will continue to update you on how we're progressing to look for a different location that they could probably lease from around. Any, any questions?
So is, I'm, I'm trying to visualize, you know, I always focus on Forest Street. Is there a couple of buildings that our eyes are on to say, man, this might work out for us or?
I don't know exactly which ones, but I know that John and Linda are going to be identifying what, what's close. And the whole idea would be to take something that's not being used right now and like kind of refurbishing it. But again, we don't want it to be really, really expensive. Um, we'd have to look into that. And it works like, oh, I'll make that a lot of money. But, um, we're, we're just right now in the, in the, we're trying to show CCC that we're trying to make progress. So probably what will happen is we probably will have to ask for a lease extension for just a little, little bit, but we're hoping that maybe we have some, some ideas in the hopper before we go back to need the next.
Each library, library is very actively used, well.
By the, by the after school programs for sure. So location is very important. Um, so if you're, just reach out to me if you have any ideas. We, we're, we're all ears, but we just wanted you to know that this is, if you were ever talking to CCC and this came up, we didn't want you to hear it from them. We wanted you to hear it from us.
Honey, I, I wanted to hear you say that location is important. Uh, it bears repeating, uh, the schools in the immediate vicinity rely on that resource heavily. And they should continue to be able to do so. So something very close to the current location, um, would be heavily prioritized.
Definitely. And, um, Linda had reached out and suggested something to me that I've since suggested to city manager come in and send his email. So anyway, we'll be coming back to you, but we'll be having conversations on that. But again, just letting you know that there'll be a change in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Jones, Water Services Initiative Director. I think a little bit of a pivot, uh, from some of the conversations on projects specifically on the unfunded is I feel like my approach would be talking about water services. Um, so right now, I don't feel like I have to solicit projects, right? They just show up on my desk. About you work on. Uh, so right now, let's say probably about $615 million of the projects that all are, are great things and that have to be done. Uh, breaking that down, I will say about 182 million are programmed through our five-year plan, which is about 20% of, of that list of unfunded. Um, I did kind of highlight a couple of projects that are on there, but again, the conversation isn't necessarily about specific projects. I think it's more about like that programming. Um, so again, when I look at what's not funded, um, right, that's the work that has to be done, right? What's not programmed? And there's different banking that's looking about, when do these need to occur? And the funding strategies of how we get those things done, and how do we do that smart? I think, um, when we talk about the waters, the drinking water side of it, um, I think then I would talk about resiliency, right? Our ability to adapt through environmental challenges that come through, whether we're talking droughts, um, or exceptional winter weather like over right now, and what that means for us for the next couple of years, how we pivot our operational strategy for water resources. That resiliency of being able to, to recover um, from whatever operational modifications that we do make, surface water is a part of that recovery strategy. When we talk about water's resources, surface water, I will say is your checking account, right? It's water that you have available now. And how do you use that efficiently? And how do you modify your operations to allow recovery of other water sources such as groundwater? Uh, Lake Mary is a perfect example. We do have projects going on in Lake Mary water treatment plant and in that area now of how we continue to improve that. Um, but there also are unfunded needs that we continue to strive to leverage that surface water. Are there surface water stores in the interbasin? Um, I'm sure people in this room know more than I do about the fire and the floods of the pipeline roadway will have that impacted? And how we're trying to come out of that to get that back into service. But in addition to the pipeline infrastructure, there are other needs that are on the funding list, both upstream and downstream of that catastrophic failure. And as that comes back online, unfunded projects will continue to arise on how we fully leverage that surface water when it is available, when it makes the most sense from efficiency and water quality uh, perspective. Uh, so I did make a note that, um, the work in the middle of the pipeline, uh, thanks to our grants team, is where we receive the funding and we're looking over the next couple of years to get that back in service. But it's not the end of the story, right? How the treatment plan responds? And how we add efficiency upstream of that to really leverage that surface water source to be part of our strategy going forward. A shift into water reclamation, I think we shift from resiliency to more out of the busness. Um, our ability to get bigger and better. By that, I mean bigger in capacity, right? How do we continue to grow with our community? And by doing it better, how do we do things more efficient? How do we integrate the best technology into our systems? And how do we integrate innovation, um, into that? Um, so again, that's on the water reclamation side, this enhancement of, of again, how we do those things bigger and better. Um, so I didn't necessarily touch on, on stormwater. Uh, stormwater is on a great path. There's been a tremendous amount of work done over the past few years. And then that does have a very strategic plan. And those modifications are occurring. I think in conclusion, before we go into questions, again, I would go back to what city manager talked about. Is our approach going forward with two challenges. One is stormwater. And how we grow into the demands of that service. And so again, operational budget, not the unfunded, identifies putting resources on the ground to do that better. Um, that's about half of the strategy. The other half has to do with our currently funded, our programmed processes. And the unfunded is on the project management side and that funding management. And so the other emphasis we put is a lot of work into our project management, those positions that deliver projects, that manage them, that help us find the funding, that keep us on track with the things that we already know we have to do and the things that come up every day that get added to that list and have to be slotted in or partnered with existing projects. So I think we do have a greater approach going forward. I think the operating budget that we're requesting, uh, supports that initiative. And it puts us to the long game of how we continue to address a typical way and get to these unfunded things along the way. So I will stop there and I am available for any questions.
So there's, uh, big numbers. Are, are we doing a water rate study right now? So I presume that's all these numbers have been programmed into that.
So not all of them would be programmed into that. Um, we are doing a rate structure study. The study will be focused on the time period of the study, typically that's going to be three to five years. When we talk about something unfunded, we're talking about 10, 20 years. And so as we go through, there will be portions of the unfunded that will be part of that analysis. As, you know, some long, some long-term projections. But, um, but yeah, the intent is not that we would, that we would look to modify rates to, to, to fund something that you would do 20 years from now, right? The rates you do 20 years from now from that. Um, I also believe that your rate structure will, while it touches your CIP in that short period of time, is again, like your operational cost of service and how you're maintaining the services you have to date. Um, when you look at unfunded, there's other strategies from the outside funding, from, from bonds, low interest loans, state and federal money that kind of play into that, that you don't want to build your restructure on assumptions. Um, but that is part of that. And then I think also looking for those partnerships on, um, on how you, how you diversify your funding portfolio. And those are strategies. And again, we work with our finance department, we work with our, our, our funding strategist on how we do that. Uh, but I think it's all part of your picture, which are right, we are beginning a, a rate structure study. Um, but the research will fix $615 million of, of, you know, projects.
No, we may not want to look at 20 years in a rate study, but we may want to look at 25 years, maybe 10 years. I mean, it's probably better to increase it a little now than to have some horrendous increase required 20 years from now. The other thing is, uh, at some point, we're going to have to upgrade the quality of our reclaimed water because it's going into our aquifer. And, uh, I won't go into details, there's no issues with it. Other cities, like we get a tour, a council, a tour of the Skystone. They will not put their A1, uh, reclaimed water into their aquifer. And you need to be thinking about that at some point. Thank you.
Uh, May, thank you for the comment. Uh, it is being looked at, the, your comment about reclaimed water, um, and expect to have more information coming back to you on that. As to the bigger question about rate studies and, and where some of these future unfunded projects fit in, I, I think we can expect a discussion similar to what we had with stormwater, uh, rate study, which is the rate structure cannot shoulder all of the capital improvements, especially when we're looking at, is that intended for me? Especially as we're looking at numbers this large, there will have to be, uh, a lot of, uh, strategizing and likely going outside grants, loans, appropriations, a number of things, uh, to, to fund a quarter billion dollar wastewater plant. Those strategies will be coming to you as well. I mean, the planning for this will, will be underway here soon. Uh, and as part of that planning, we'll be looking at funding strategies for certain.
So I'm very pleased to hear that you're thinking about that stuff in the end of term. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Shannon.
Again, Paul Loon, City Engineer, you're going to talk about the Butler Avenue Complete Street project. Uh, you know, right now we have the pilot bike lanes out on Butler, and you'll be hearing more about those at the end of May at a work study. Um, this, this project, um, we talked about it as, as an unfunded project in our CIP, uh, work, uh, council retreat. And it would be for raised, uh, bike lane and pedestrian pathways from Melton Road to South Melton Road. And then the two, uh, protected intersections at San Francisco and Beaver. Uh, we've already had a consultant do 15% plans and estimates on the protected intersections. And we have a consultant right now, um, working on 15% plans and estimates on the regular path of bike lanes. Uh, internally, we're looking, we're just estimating complete, uh, with the intersections and the bike lanes, about $10 million. Uh, Big Wild Card is going to be right away in Eastman acquisitions. Um, this is, uh, protected intersection from our, our study, 15% study. And the graphic on the right is what the raised, uh, bike lane and pedestrian pathway could look like. Um, it'd be approximately 10 to 11 feet wide, um, and have travel for pedestrians and, and bicycles. Uh, speaking with our traffic engineers and senior traffic, uh, senior transportation planner yesterday, uh, we have a grant identified for later this summer to look at applying for the protected intersections. And we also have a grant we're looking at later this year for the raised bike lanes. So more to come on that. Uh, the other, the other big, uh, item that's hanging out there in the original plan is the relocation of a lone tree. Um, swinging it from where it currently comes down kind of straight, swinging it to the right. Uh, there was a, there was a study done in 2006 about realignment and then as well as an interchange for the I-40. Uh, this would provide a new gateway to the community and entry to the downtown area. Flagstaff would also take a lot of tractor off of Melton Road, which can be very busy. Um, it does provide that enhanced regional mobility, again, helps our, our local traffic circulation with help in. And then there would also be components with the active, um, transportation master plan for, for bicycles, foot trails, those type of items. Uh, the very large, um, cost, $122 million. Uh, that's just a estimate and that would need some sort of future bond or border, border of tax initiative. Uh, the piece down by, you see, I, uh, put Juniper Point Development down there. So Juniper Point is actually being developed right now, phase one. And they're in for class for phase two and three, and they will actually be constructing that part of, of Lone Tree. So that's going to be, be done here in the next, uh, probably two years. Any questions on the bike lanes or Lone Tree realignment, I-40's intersection?
Can you put your finger on where the, uh, Lone Tree realignment part is?
So Lone, so Lone Tree currently comes straight down here. And this is, this is from the 2006 report. So you don't have a lot of, uh, pine, or the pine candy development or Juniper Point. And the realignment, there's two different thoughts in the 2006 study. One would be coming around the school and swinging down, or one would be coming straight and swinging this way.
But isn't the Lone Tree in Butler intersection, and how does that affect that in that overpass?
Uh, that's for the, that's for the.
Oh, okay. I'm thinking of the, yeah, I was like, Lone Tree, okay.
And, um, yeah, for this, CCC at the bottom there. Yeah, this is the Cooper University College.
And I'm sure there were these conversations.
Yeah, they were, they called us, all, all the players, the, the college, uh, NAU, the Rocky Mountain Research Center, the kids in school, they were all involved back in, in 2006. So if we ever move forward with this project, we would, um, reinitiate that study together with all the players again. Uh, and, you know, look at doing this in the future. Um, they had a meeting with ADOT the other day, and they are talking about bridge deck replacements here in maybe the next five to seven years.
You have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I defer to you.
All right. Thank you, Greg. What's this new realignment of Lone Tree? And I-40 takes place with the fridge at the current, uh, Lone Tree. And I-40 be demolished, or would it just be refurbished and used as a all-inclusive route?
The, the underpass.
This is a, this is a underpass, correct, please, correct. Uh, no, that would remain. And, and what, this section of Lone Tree would actually still remain because you have access up to Lake Mary.
It's going to remain there, but we see the main one.
Correct.
We might, if we can find the kids' money.
Yeah, the interchange, the interchange will be right here. And because you have to have certain distances between the, the.
Yeah, I understand that. And then my underrated question is on Butler. There's kind of like two projects. One is the, uh, San Francisco and Beaver improved intersections, protected intersections.
Correct.
And then the other is raising the bike path up to the level of the sidewalks. Are those connected? I mean, could we maybe get funding for one and do the other one later, or do they have to be done?
No, that's, that's what we're trying to do is, uh, we're trying to get funding through one grant for the protected intersections, do those, do those first, and then, um, another grant and do the, you know, bike lanes. If we could do both at the same time, we would try to coordinate.
So what we're hoping to do is fund both of them from Radlin, largely from Radlin, correct? All right. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you, Greg.
Well, thank you. And your comment segues into my question, and then council members, we will go your way. On the topic of how do we fund this, and thank you for the information, Paul, if we're seeing more clarity on, on these projects and what they might cost. Uh, this is just off, off the cuff here, but I'm putting it out on the table. We received some. This is just off the cuff here, but I'm putting it out on the table. We received some very favorable news last week about $3 million coming in from the state Department of Transportation, the board, rather, to offset our downtown mile match. And I'm wondering if funding like that could then be repurposed. The funding that that will offset could be repurposed into potential grant match for these projects. And I think that would be going back to 419 funding. I don't know, Rick, if you have thoughts on that. I know you're hearing this for the first time, but it seems like there might be some opportunities now that we didn't have just a couple of weeks ago, to talk about how to match or grant funding for this and make these projects very attractive. Who's up?
I guess I question, which is higher priority, raising the bike lanes up to the sidewalk level? I would think that the higher priority than those intersections. You know, but I guess I would defer to the Transportation Commission and Jeff Allen as a separate tier team.
Yeah, they're both, they're both high priorities, and as far as the, it just depends what grants are available and which projects are better suited for which grants is available at that time.
One concern I have is the Transportation Commission meeting I attended. They discussed the cost to maintain the candidate sticks and the curves and all that. And I think, if I remember correctly, it was something on the order of $400,000 a year. So if we could somehow work that project ahead, and we could save $400,000 every year, that's a recurring cost. And if we could get this project done, then that recurring cost would be replaced and that will go away. We don't have the one type of cost.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Sweet, I think, has a question.
I'm looking at the screen and I see Butler and San Francisco, but I'm not seeing the Beaver, or both protected intersections still.
Yeah, the two different stars.
Okay, but on the next screen?
Yeah, this is just one. I just had only enough room for so many files.
Okay. And can you remind me how much the two protected intersections?
Maybe about $1 million each between design and construction. So $2 million.
So for me, I would be interested in trying to figure out how we can move that forward. That doesn't, and I know Rick, not want to hear this, but it seems like that is something tangible that maybe we could put in the parking lot or later today or talk about it more, but it seems like we did not have any light on the bridge.
And I would support that too. And I just want to make mention, I talked to Stacy BK about this, when, again, when we were, well, information we gave to Washington. But the Department of Transportation, when we met with those folks and Mayor, Councilmember Sweet, and correctly if I'm wrong, that they indicated that Mayor Peter Chag, his big focus is, I think, had safety and infrastructure over even highway, you know, freeway money. So I think that, and I mentioned this, Stacy BK about one of the grants that I wrote down that they said, and she said that it just opened up last week. So I think that's something to look at as well, because it's very favorable for administration to fund these type of projects. So I'm sure that Stacy BK is already up.
Yeah, I believe we're talking about the state grants.
Yeah. Yeah, I said it to Paul and everybody yesterday, there's also.
Yeah. And that was the, that was the grant that the traffic engineer was looking in for the protected intersections.
Right.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And right before lunch. But I came to talk about the carbon neutrality plan and, of course, opportunities for investing in the plan. And this is going to be a very large menu. Some of the council members may have seen this information before when we were going through the Citizen Bond Committee. This is very reminiscent. It's been updated to reflect a few additional considerations. So this is going to focus on really, and let me just back up. When, I've mentioned the carbon neutrality plan many times and how prescriptive it is. So what is going to be presented is really based on that prescriptive nature of the carbon neutrality. And trying to get funding not only into the community, but also into the organization. So this is the balance of community offerings as well as organizational needs. And focus on healthy and efficient homes, energy independence, safe and accessible bike and pedestrian infrastructure. Talked just a little bit about that already, community health and resilience. Accelerators for accessory dwelling units and high efficiency homes. And community electric mobility as well as food systems, which is not something we talk a lot about. So let's dive in. So under healthy and efficient homes, we've put a package together that is at the price tag of $15.5 million to increase home health and safety as well as affordability and increasing energy efficiency. So some of the council may recall, we were fortunate enough to get some community direct funding that was sponsored by Fort Halloran. So we have $750,000, for example, that's coming into the city that's going to be targeted specifically at our low-income needs in housing sector for both property owners and renters. This is really building off of that same element of going deep into a home to increase the efficiency. On average, that's about $10 to $15 per home, as we see in our conditions in the home staff and Flagstaff. This also has built into this package expanded energy rebates. Some of the council may be familiar that we have a really successful home rebate program for weatherization and improvement of efficiency measures through heating or duct sealing and so forth. We also would like to introduce a loan guarantee and interest buydown program. These programs are very successful in other communities, and we have a lot of good best practices in our toolbox. And then also tying into this is a very critical element, and that is workforce development. So that would be mentoring programs, apprenticeship programs, also working with the construction sector developers to accelerate training for high efficiency and so forth. The next is the energy independence initiative. This is to bring solar and battery backup microgrid systems at our emergency response facility. So this can be police, fire stations, the airport. So this would make a microgrid out of each emergency response facility that we have in Flagstaff. A very important initiative to prepare for disruptions. The next category is safe and accessible bike and pedestrian infrastructure. We worked very closely with Paul and his team, or very closely with Martin, in drafting of the ATMP. Obviously, very closely, we worked very closely with the community, but we wanted to ensure that the ATMP, that management plan aligned with the carbon neutrality goals that the council set. And with that in mind, this would, this funding would focus specifically on pedestrian crossings, primary byways, foot trails, and protected bike lanes. So it's going to take the projects in the ATMP and really accelerate within those four categories. I believe, and Paul, I'm not sure if you have this number, but some rough numbers that were floating around for the cost of the ATMP is a little bit over $200 million. And that's what we built into that price tag for the carbon neutrality plan. When we brought that forward, that $600 million price tag also includes $200 million for the ATMP because it's a critical element of bringing forward, shifting up the able miles travel and so forth. The next area, oh my goodness, I rolled the last slide. Next area. You can tell everyone's getting a little pre-lunch sleepy. No one called me on it. The next area is community health and resilience. We want to focus on creating community resilience hubs by retrofitting existing city facilities. We just put in a $1 million grant to the EPA to start this initiative. We've got some great community partners that we're working with, and, you know, across all things crossable that we actually get some seed money for the EPA to launch this effort. But this is to advance air filtering, put in those microgrids with solar, battery storage, and then create these neighborhood-based hubs. And these will provide refuge in these sources in an emergency situation. So it could be a high particulate matter day, it could be a weather-related cold temperatures or high heat day. But we have a really good opportunity to incorporate this into our building stock. And then we want to expand the HEPA program that I've been talking with the council, I've mentioned a few times, that our HEPA filter, air filter program, which has been incredibly successful. We just can't keep up with the need and the funding. We've been able to find probably about $45,000 in grant funds, which have been completely footing the bill for this initiative. And we'd like to see it actually go further and deeper. Okay, now onto this slide. Accelerating high efficiency residential structures. We did have in the discussions with the Citizen Bond Committee last year incentives for new accessory dwelling units. This is really just to focus on getting the accessory ADUs into our community, but also creating an incentive that would encourage people to build high efficiency, if not all electric. And then, of course, committing to affordable rent for one to two years. The second piece of this is to provide high efficiency building plan sets for residential homes. Our friends down in the city of Phoenix just launched a program very similar to this, where they did a design competition for plan sets and awarded funding, and they actually now own the design sets that can just be downloaded for free. And again, these are incentives to really spark development of high efficiency residential structures. And then the next is a healthy homes and stoves. We really want to try to focus on getting the non-EPA certified stoves out of our community. We know a lot of our community members use wittering stoves to heat during the winter months. And a lot of them are not up to efficiency in terms of air quality. So we want to leverage this with federal funding and federal resources. And then community electric mobility. Some of the council may recall lots of previous conversations about bike share pre-pandemic. And one thing that we're noting in the industry is that this recommendation is that we would actually move forward with a bike share that the city owns and runs. So it wouldn't be volatile to the business, the market, and so forth. So an option here. And then, of course, an electric vehicle car share program, which we very successfully launched around the country, gave a lot of good best practices. And then finally, last one, and I think this might be good timing. But it is a food system support, and this is to launch a multi-prong initiative to increase food security and resilience. And so not only focusing on expansion of community gardens, but actually building indoor community gardens. So indoor greenhouses and a regional kitchen, so people can actually grow food and legally process it and then turn around and sell it. It's been a challenge up here in Flagstaff for people. We don't have a regional hub or any of the rules to focus on this. And that would provide lots of business development and future markets assistance to local farmers. That's a lot. Again, we wanted to provide a menu that aligns with moving the needle of the carbon neutrality plan. All right, thank you. Any questions?
Yes. A couple. Please, so the first initiative, I think, the deep energy retrofit.
Yes.
So you estimate $10,000 per home. I mean, in my mind, I'm thinking solar's $23,000, you know. If we're looking at the older community structures, they were built in the late 40s, and so they would have to be completely rewired.
So these would be weatherization.
Oh, weather.
Yeah, these would be energy weatherization. So this would be weatherization assistance, like duct sealing, appliance replacements, ensuring that windows are properly sealed if eligible for replacement, to go from like a single pane to a triple pane. Yeah, so these would be deep weatherization.
Got you. And then $2 million for emergency backup grids, which, you know, we had some email correspondence about that, my concern with the city buildings converting to all-electric before we have enough backup generators.
Yeah.
So is that, I mean, I just think that that should be parallel with the conversion to all-electric because.
Absolutely.
And then the community resilience hubs.
Yes.
We did one of those during the storm and nobody came, right?
I'm not familiar, actually.
We had a resilience, we had a, what was it called, a warming, a warming center. And maybe it was just they weren't used to it and stuff, so I just wanted to point that out.
Absolutely. And yeah, there are new concepts.
And then the ADUs, we've had this discussion before, I'm a big fan of that, and I'm glad that that is staying on the forefront of people's minds, because I think that's just addressing our housing shortage. And if we can make it more affordable for current homeowners to increase our housing stock. And that component to make sure they're keeping it affordable housing, I'm really happy to that. So that was all I had.
Okay, great. ADUs, yes?
Yeah, we've actually had some internal meetings. There were a lot of fantastic best-case studies out there, but also some really creative thinking that got underway with the community development staff. And so we have some seed money right now, the $50,000 that we're working on. And look forward to bringing back our recommendations for launching that pilot in the next few months.
Hey, and they are running just about 10 minutes behind, so it'll be, we come back from lunch at 12:10. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we are about 10 minutes behind, but we're sort of close to schedule, so no problem there. Enjoy your lunch, and we'll come back at 12:10.
And lunch is in the little community room that's just across the way here, so.
I want to go there.
Welcome back from lunch. So we will get started. First, we'll have Shannon and Greg say a few words in a moment, and then we'll go to Rick, and then it'll be Sam Beckett and Shannon Jones to start off that first section. But since we just had lunch, it's important that I make sure everyone is awake. So out of curiosity, what is everyone's favorite season in Flagstaff? I'm going to start with the first one I think is least likely, but I don't know. And you get to vote on your favorite. Are you ready? Favorite season in Flagstaff, starting with winter, raise your hand. That's what I suspected, about five of us. Okay, next one, spring, raise your hand. No one just, oh, one, you have one. It's so windy, Rick. It's so windy. Okay, now here's the one I was really curious to, I was curious about. Raise your hand if it's summer. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Okay, now raise your hand if it's fall. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. A tie between fall and summer, that's because they're both equally amazing.
You forgot construction.
Right, construction. I didn't think about that part. Range choice voting next time. I love that idea, Councilmember McCarthy, because you know I'm a special fan of range choice voting. Yeah. All right, without further ado, Shannon and Greg to get us started.
Thanks, Katie. So we just wanted to take a little moment to talk a little bit about this new section called future plan. We spent some time as a budget team, as well as a leadership team, talking about how each year we bring the next year's recommended budget to you. We don't spend as much time talking about what we're discussing for the future. We don't spend as much time talking about what we're discussing for the future. And as you heard, designing things, planning for them, having that transparent community conversation, those all take time. So a big part of this future planning conversation today is to talk to you about, these are some of the things that we see on the horizon so that we can get your feedback as to what you see as most important. It helps us really dedicate our time and resources to those things that you find are most important and that we can start with that community engagement process as well. So wanted to take a little bit of time and touch on that. I know Greg has more to add, so I'd love to engage you on this portion of the agenda for today.
Thank you, Shannon. Yeah, in this budget process, you know, the traditional format would be looking ahead to next year's budget, going through all the important minutia of that. But really, the process is so much more than that. It is looking ahead, as Shannon noted. And we haven't had this particular component in previous retreats. The budget team added this this year and the leadership team. There was a lot of minds coming together to figure out how to structure this format. But we think it's paramount to be looking ahead because there are items that, projects that are underfunded that nevertheless need to be talked about and frankly, will never see funding. So it's kind of getting things in the queue or in the hopper for future consideration. The other thing is, I think it's an opportunity to check in internally. Of course, you heard a lot of projects that are coming to you internally, but also with what we're hearing. And we're hearing things, we all are, from our community, our citizens, things that should be considered that may not fall me into what has already been prioritized or capitalized. So you're getting a mix of all of those things. And I think it's an important exercise. Would like to do this each and every year. We talked this morning about a number of unfunded projects, programs, things that we want you to be mindful of. Council gave us some direction on some of those. Now we're going to segue into future considerations for revenues. And I think it's tended to be high level. Yes, Rick, are you ready to take over going to revenues? But flower, you have some planning thoughts, planning thoughts and strategizing. But yes, any questions here, please.
What's that door? I think there might be a machine in there making lots of noise.
I was waiting.
I hope you like yourself.
Can you please stay back there?
Just trying to get everybody.
Oh, that's great.
A week and.
That was good.
Thank you. Any questions or thoughts about this format in particular? I feel good that I've got Councilmember McCarthy.
I made too much fun today.
Great, we'll hear from Rick. Thank you.
Let's give a round of applause for sitting here.
Shannon, my intro. Those are a lot of topics I want to talk about, but so I can just jump into this. The second is more about installing mobile projects. We talked about future things that are unfunded. And then heads turn and say, hey, Greg, find us a couple of these. Well, I'm going to come up with a solution for it, for everything, really. So I'm just going to go through some thought through a couple of funds. We're going to look at a general fund, we're going to look at a special road fund, an enterprise fund to see how when you make decisions, you have operation needs and so forth, how it affects the long range planning of our several funds and color of money we have. These are just examples. They're not really intended to be, yes, where we go or we're planning. Just really get you the business and the thought process through what we need to go through over the years and how we build these plans. So we do ten year plans for all of our funds. All the color of monies have sheathed a ten year plan. Some go longer based on their tax periods or so forth. And so I just put a quick graphic together for each one of the funds that we're going to be talking about, where we stand today in our five year plans that we're talking about. And then from this year twenty five and on, what's in the five year plans? How is it balanced over the years? And how does our uses match up to our sources? So we're going to dive into this a little bit. It'll be similar on other slides. But as you look at these slides, the sources is the green line that you see here. Annual resources we have to fund operations. This is revenues like taxes, charges for services, lease income, interest income, grants, which is a big part of our resource that we use. And then the orange line on the slide is more about our uses that we have, the outflows of cash, the things we want to deliver in the funds. This is like our operational costs, capital, CIP, fleet, those kind of things, as well as our debt service and bond payments that we have. So that's kind of the framework that you'll see here. So here's an example of the general fund. And our objective is to keep the green line above the orange line, right? You want to have resources available to deliver, but we have in the long range to play them. So here you see a depiction of the general fund. Initially, you see the oranges above, but that's the one time resources that we have, that we build over time. Then we say, well, we're going to commit these one time resources over the next couple of years, but then that draws down into our plans. And then the revenue kind of parallels with our uses going up. Out in the twenty, this year twenty thirty is where we're doing some recession planning, some planning about where our revenues may be seven years from now. Recession's are cyclical, so we want to make sure we're building that in and trying to make sure we keep these lines fairly close to each other. So sometimes what you see in here, you see a gap in these middle years, which is really gaining one time capacity to cover ourselves during those times of economic downturns. Part of that is our unbalanced reserves. Part is just cash that we've set aside to make it through those maybe later years. So this is kind of the big picture of where we stand today. Next, I want to hand it off to myself. Sorry. I just think I go into a different fund, this general fund. So in the general fund, we know we've got several needs within the general fund still. You've heard us talking about the budget this year and what capacity. Bradley outlined this kind of our resources and uses that we have planned for this budget cycle. But we do have some core needs and service growth that we need to continue to think about and invest in over time, things that may not be built into our five year plan currently. Investing in people and compensation and benefits is always in the forefront of what we want to do in all of our plans. We do have, as we talk, Merrick's budget, which Merrick paid for performance budget. We have that built in. That's where you see those expenditures going up over time, those kind of things are built in. But we don't have annual market adjustments built in, changing that pay plan, moving with the competition in the long range. So that's one area that maybe we need to spend a little more time looking at the resources for that. Increases in our health insurances, those kind of things need to be starting to roll into our plans. Our ongoing request that we receive each year that we're funding, saying, well, we'll give you the funding this year, come back and ask next year, that's a gap that we need to fill. Is between a three and a half to four million dollars that we're funding in one time. That should possibly be ongoing resources in our plans. We're seeing similar stress in other funds that we have, such as sustainability, fuel or water service funds, our library, really getting up against that gap of the ongoing additional cost. Inflation in the operating costs, we don't have a built in inflation over the years. It's really flat and then people ask for additional fundings year to year. So is there a way we can build our plan better and have those operational inflation increases into the contractual commodities, the services we deliver? Maintenance and operation for capital projects. While we try to take a forward look as to what the operational cost will be if we add, put something in place, the courthouse is a good example. We put that in place and we knew the operation cost would increase in the future. But we don't always do that very well in the long range. We're aware of it, but we have to ask for when those come online. Additional staff, additional staffing, we don't put in a number in our plans for additional staff over time. It's really an ask annually and so forth. So how do we build in a growth that says, okay, we know every year we need to grow our parks, our release and file? And how do we get those built into our five year plans? It's work that we need to do and get a little bit better at. And infrastructure resource needs, our facilities maintenance, you heard that a little bit ago, the repairs, the placement, the upkeep, as well as our fleets. Fleets getting more expensive. We have a flat allocation, we need to start addressing that, as well as IT hardware, software. As we grow, it's getting more expensive. So. So those are just some of the concepts and some of the future planning and resource needs from general fund perspective. So just want to step through, okay, let's think about how we build those into our five year plans and how do that move the needles of the oranges and greens in our slides? So the dash slide is kind of talking about that picture. What does it change when we talk about those resources we're talking about? So in this example, I just show the impact of moving the general fund to every time, ongoing time, it's a fun time, you know, that gap in four million dollars that we need to start addressing, as well as adding personnel on an annual basis. Five hundred thousand a year for staffing, new staff. How do we get that into a plan? And you can see it really does move that orange, that use of the funds upward quite a bit above the green line that we represent. So those are the conversations that we have to have. It's like, we're going to expect this level of service and moving forward. How do we want other expenditures to fund these things? Or how do we add revenues or resources to close the gap? So that's, that's the operational side. And then so on the revenue side, I just kind of threw some concepts together. I just got not really to get into specific things, but this is the, where I add things like our user features. Can we increase our user features by five hundred thousand a year? Start growing that, that capital needs to improve, rate increase, that, those kind of things. But that's an area that we can look at for resources. Growth and revenues, if they beat our predictions, that's where we can help close that gap. Property tax, we've got a gap of capacity in our private property tax. What does that look, when you roll that into this model? And think about how we get closer to matching up these lines. So some of those concepts come in, but you may not be able to meet the needle to get everything that we want. So then it becomes adjusting those uses and where we want to fall over time. So that was just one of those planning resources, planning ideas we did for general fund. The next, we'll talk about HERF, highway user revenue funds, it's our gas tax fund. I'll do the graphics part and we'll have Sam come up for the talking points. But here we see today's highway user revenue fund. A little bit different than the general fund, really closely matched with those uses and resources that we have for the HERF fund. So going into the out here, we can see, you know, we're aligned pretty well. We've got a lot of one type money built up for capital, operating capital. Equipment is very expensive, but then it kind of levels up. And the out here is you can see debt financing built into a plan. So debt finance is one of those resources to help fund the uses. So you can see how those kind of start to bridge out together and try to meet up to fund those capital needs of highway user revenue fund. So that's kind of a baseline picture. I'll let Sam talk about the next.
Thanks, Ruth. Jonathan Duneall, Sam Beckett, Section Director for Facilities and Streets, which is why I'm up here today for the HERF funding. Just to kind of talk about what we're dealing with on the HERF side. You know, ten years ago, this was more lucrative funds. You know, utility usage was high, there was a lot of transportation movement. And now we're seeing it's still there, but we're evolving. So as that evolution happens for electricity and more efficient vehicles, we're starting to see that gas tax drop, right? And this is something that is a federal rate per gallon. And it really hasn't changed in significant time frame right here. And frankly, we take everybody on board with reevaluating these rates itself. It's one of those, we're kind of stuck where we're stuck. It's a tough deal, but we're working through it. And the big piece that we're working through is everything else is still continuing to grow. So as we get into the next item, we have the maintenance operations. Those still continue. I'm sure many of you all saw even this winter, those maintenance and those needs and those expectations that we created here honestly increase. Many of those needs, honestly, probably ninety percent of those that came in require exceeding what some of our policies say that we need to do, that the community wants more. So we're trying to figure out how do we balance out those operational needs and those maintenance needs? Because frankly, they're going to get to a point here real soon. Honestly, even looking out here today, we're behind. And getting caught up is almost impossible right now with the current staffing and equipment we have. But that growth opportunity is no longer there with this revenue cell. Understanding what that is and how do we make the best of what we have? And frankly, we're coming to a critical point where we have to start deciding on what services are really prioritized, especially from that HERF, from maintenance needs. When you start thinking about some of those services like snow operations, sweeping, we're coming into summertime, we got road striping out here for safety, pavement maintenance. There's a lot of pieces that we have to figure out, where do we want to come back? And frankly, I don't think we can. So just things that we're trying to think about. Again, I hit on here, fuel efficient vehicles, you know, looking at some of the data that Arizona State has been tracking and putting in there, we're only seeing a fraction of the impact from electric vehicles. We know the transition is happening, it's not happening at the rate that we probably want to see it happen, which for this funding source is great. However, those impacts are covered. And they're already starting to trend in there and we're watching those trends as they drastically affect that funding coming in. So we're trying to plan for those in the out years with understanding we have two ways this year. That's great, this budget's approved, we'll give them. We can get creative though and take that money out of a whole different pot of nothing to help with our sleds program. We have no staff to support that. So we work with engineering, Jeff Bowen, his group, and we're working on getting that. But five years, we have to figure out how do we absorb two staff members in HERF? That's a real tough place to be in, knowing that five years out, you're struggling to learn that stuff. Some of the other ones is new infrastructure. There's definitely no multimodal function or, I don't want to call it function, but optimization within HERF. Right, their focus is moving vehicles. That's why the tax is focused on fuel. So that money is very linked. What can be used on, charged against? So as we start adding some of these pieces, I fully support what we're doing. And I think that, you know, we've been talking about that back here before is, it's great that we're adding this infrastructure, but we do have to figure out where does that maintenance belong? And we talked, I heard you hit on it earlier, which was the separated bike lanes. I think it's great that we're trying new things. However, those costs can no longer be absorbed into HERF. Who's going to maintain that? Well, that's a limited resource to find out who's going to actually maintain those pieces going forward. So we do have to figure those things out in the long term here. The cost of inflation for contracted services, that's the other piece. Sometimes it's easy enough to say, well, we'll contract it up, sweeping operations, city of Phoenix, that's all contracted service. That's great because they have the resources down there and they're private entities that have that interest and they have massive operations. Up here, we don't have that kind of economic interest. There's just not fun services for sweeping operations. We're really trying to think about, how do we remove some of these to gain progress in others? And I think the biggest one that I can emphasize enough is that community expectation. And when we actually sit back and look at what our policies tell us we should be doing, based on the resources we have, those expectations far exceed them. But how do you tell a resident that? At this point, we're behind, so I don't know how to catch up. We're still working through that. We've been working with the budget team, we've been talking about, what does this look like in the long term projections? How do we get ahead of it? Right now, we can't, we won't. So we're doing our best to keep up with it. And then we like to sprinkle in an emergency or two in the middle of this and see if we can't challenge ourselves.
Same, I can't believe it. I didn't want to call that a surprise, but it happens. So we're working through all these pieces here. And I don't want to make it sound like it's completely negative piece. It could rebound out of this, you know, we're watching, we're not the only ones having this problem. This is statewide, this is nationwide. Last conference we went to, huge, huge conversations on this because most all.
all of municipalities operate off some sort of gas tax to support their operations, and they dwindled them. So we're trying to figure out what that is. Something will come out of this, we just don't know when. So until then, we're just planning to stay up with what we have, with the current resources we're running with, and to keep those in good shape. I think that's our biggest piece, so. With that, I'll open up any questions or anything back with Rick.
Questions, Sam? Taking the talking points that Sam just brought out to you, talking about the, the growth, the revenue of the gas tax, you can see it's really flat, uh, on these models. We're not expecting a lot of, a lot of growth there, but we have those needs, we have the inflationary costs, uh, of operation costs, as well as equipment replacements. So here, I'm just demonstrating how our uses really are uppacing what we have in resources, we're just not being able to figure out how's it paid for. So here we see, you know, impacts of inflationary costs, about four hundred thousand here, the gap in maintenance, like the ongoing gap versus what we're funding one time, needs to be enhanced, uh, another five hundred thousand there. And just that, as, uh, Sam alluded to, the different type of ins- infrastructure that we're going to be looking at, there's going to be higher maintenance costs, matter of pace for is going to be another question, but how does that impact the impacts of the HERF fund? So here you can see the, the expenditures, uh, now are exceeding the revenues. Uh, and the next, next slide is, is, is a little different, it's just a conversational piece, talking about those revenues. As we go to a more electric type, uh, program, which we want to see in our, our community, if everybody gets on board in our community, that does impact where our gas tax future revenues are. Um, I kind of made this a little drastic to, to really enhance what we're talking about, but here you can see, like, in a couple of years, if we start losing five hundred thousand in, in fiscal year twenty seven, five percent of our gas tax because of the shift, um, it starts to, to move that curve the wrong way, instead of trying to keep up with our resources. Uh, following here, if we're one point five million less in our revenues, fifteen percent, maybe three million, and then maybe five million, uh, in twenty thirty, you know, that's one of our targets, I mean neutrality. What if everyone gets on board and starts making that shift to electric? You can see our gas tax, this is just example, you too are, but fifty percent less in gas taxes, we create a big gap in delivering those, uh, operational needs of HERF. So there's going to have to be something, something else is going to have to change, uh, as far as how it's free to get paid for, uh, maintained, maybe there's a gas tax increase, or maybe there's a different type of way of collecting revenues from those non-gas vehicles. Uh, they use roads just as much as gas vehicles, and so how do we look at getting those to fund for those maintenance and move here? So just, uh, you know, a visual, how, what we could see in the future. Next is a enterprise fund. Uh, here we're talking about water services, and this is called the water service fund, so this is, uh, water, wastewater, reclaimed water, stored water. Uh, here you can see a depiction of how their fund looks at resourcing and using over time. You can see they've got some more ups and downs in their plan, but that's because of capital improvements, capital improvements in a enterprise funds are usually a, a big piece of, of where you see annual funding changing. Uh, you get there through reserving money annually to pay for those projects, or you debt finance potentially over time, um, and you also have rates that support, uh, water service funds. So here's the picture where it stands today, and I'll have Shannon come up and talk about, um, those needs, future needs.
Shannon, go with water services. Uh, I think, uh, very similar, I think to the picture that Sam was pointing towards, uh, a couple of things, right, some of the costs, that inflation and the growth, and are we keeping pace with, right, the things that, things cost more today than they did yesterday, and they're probably going to cost more tomorrow? And how, how are we managing that? Again, integrating technology into our capital projects, into our sustain facilities, as well as the things that we're going to do in the future, again, adding this innovation, this advanced, these advanced processes, right, into what we're doing, um, it's great, it's expected, it's programmed into what we do. But also keep it in mind that, that those things have a relative, relative short, uh, life cycle. So again, again, it's a change, um, I think just short of, I'm saying that would sound like my father, but like, they just don't make things like they used to. When he bought a vehicle, right, he drove the vehicle for twenty years, and it was still a good vehicle that he gave on to his grandkid. That's not right, but, um, but innovation, right, into the vehicles, um, we say maybe they go better, they may go more efficient, but they, the things just don't last after they do, those life cycles do shrink down. Technology, uh, wanting to keep up the latest is a constant, it's a constant effort, right, to maintain that. So again, not a negative, but we have to reprogram our thinking of how we manage that, what does our asset management look like, um, for the new things that are coming out that we're integrating into our, our innovation. Uh, again, I highlighted that in our request, we did have the ability to fund six, six positions, and we talked about our, our, our moving into, um, the migration into our stormwater and into our project management. But the reality is, is that, that's little capacity for the, uh, going forward, right? There's other sections within my division that, that didn't get that type of initiative, right, that I wasn't able to do. And so you prioritize, right? Where can we get the most paid for about today? Where can we get the most movement? Um, with the other funding projects, we kind of alluded to this, right, but again, the excessive capital need in these initiatives that are taxed on our resources today, like, that's where our money's going, that's where our time's going, where our staff is investing. And, and what are the cause of that, right? What's the initial consequences to pushing those new initiatives to, to match those capital needs? And I feel what happens is usually defer the maintenance, right? Those are the things that get pushed, pushed to the side as you're trying to deal with the things you're having to deal with today. And that our rates are no longer keeping pace with our cost of service, like we had a brief discussion earlier, but we are currently under a, a rate structure, and that our rates need to keep pace with their, need to keep pace with their cost of service. Um, and what is that cost of service? A portion of it will be those capital programs, like, it can't be all of them, and I think, uh, further into Rick's presentation, obviously, some of that, some of that effect. I'm still looking to question some people.
Any questions? Okay. So taking those thoughts further into, you know, this planning, but long range planning over ten years, uh, putting some of those concepts to work, um, in a visual presentation to council here, um, understanding there's, there's components, there's the operations side, there's the CIP side, uh, within our water services, again, this is across all funds in this high level. Um, here you see the orange lines, we, we need more capacity to pay for things like ongoing maintenance, that, that ongoing one time gap that we need to add more resources. Uh, personnel, they, our resource continues to grow, and they probably need to have some growth in staff built into their long range plan, maybe three hundred thousand a year to fund three or four positions over time, so building that into a, a future planning. Um, the inflation alone on maintenance costs, uh, causing hundreds of thousands of dollars really started to bring that, that orange line above the green that exists today. So we know, well, we can't approve those types of budgets and those types of changes, so, uh, how do you look to, to maybe fund the operations side? So I just did a, just a quick, uh, visual thing, I put in five percent increase for all funds in twenty twenty five, twenty five. How does that move that needle up? And you can see it, it does do very well across the board, we do get the green to start better aligning with those uses, those operational things. So that's a rate based, uh, consideration that we'll have over time with, with the rate studies that we have. Um, but then, then you look at the capital side, and man, the vision could look a lot different. When you put some large capital projects into a CIP, um, that you're not sure how you're funding them, this can have some major impacts of what resource we need to bring into the water service funds. So here's just an example of saying, their annual capital improvement plan needs to be at least two million, twenty million higher than the level it is today. And we've all been, we've got a wastewater treatment plant, two hundred and twenty million dollar project on the horizon, potentially, that we need to figure out, how do we get that delivered over the next five years or so forth? We'll see this in the rate study, but, uh, you can see it has a major impact on the resources versus what they want to, to spend. Um, and in this debt service, I put in partial debt service on, on this example, but if we issue a hundred and forty million of the two hundred million in debt, well, that's now another eleven million dollars ongoing that we've got to pay in debt. So you can see that also increases that outline. Um, so a lot of, a lot of things to consider when, when you're adding capital improvements, uh, to your plans. Uh, so we got to look at the resource, how do we get there with the resources, uh, to deliver some of these big projects? It may not all be rate paid. Uh, we'll have to look at maybe multiple ways to actually hit that green to fund those projects over time. Uh, so here you can see, you know, I started adding revenues, uh, adding the debt service, issuing a revenue bond, about a hundred and forty million dollars to, to clear that gap, having grants, uh, sixty million dollars in grants to help, you know, cover that gap. More grants can get lower to debt services, so we hopefully go that direction for a lot of things. Um, maybe there's an outside resource, outside water service, general obligation funds have been for stormwater and wastewater already, is that a resource that helps us fix this or plan, uh, to deliver these types of capital improvement projects over time? Uh, but what you see here is just really that gap in debt service is really what is driving the operations even with those considerations. So that was just a, a little planning thought process that, you know, we as finance staff and our divisions that are the owners of these funds kind of have to work through over time and, uh, think about how do we deliver some of these things for the organization?
Brooke, I just want to add another note for council is that, um, these certainly aren't the only three areas where we have needs, but we want to take a view of variation. General fund obviously operates different than a tax based HERF fund, um, which obviously generates different than, uh, that's an enterprise fund that is based on rates, um, another type of funding. So there are other needs throughout the organization, but we wanted to show you some examples of different ones, so that way you can see, um, how the financing, the funding can look differently, um, as well. So we're to make sure that, um, you understood that this isn't our only needs, but these can give you some examples.
Any questions on those? One way? Next, you want to do another career question? Um, yeah, so that was kind of the financial plan, the give and takes as far as operations, capital, those many items you saw in the unburdenedness, how they need to work into a future plan. Um, I was asked all of them to maybe talk about a revenue toolbox for the organization. Uh, this will be kind of high level, I'm not going to go into any specific revenue we have, but to talk to you about, you know, this is what we talk about, the resource to bring in, how do you get money into the, uh, city hands to deliver those projects? So I'm going to go quickly through a lot of these, uh, user fees is a, a prominent fee that we have within many of our funds. Uh, these are generally, uh, items that are statutory allowed to do, uh, by state regulations. We can't go above and beyond and create new programs that don't fit what a municipality should do, uh, and that's similar with all types of revenues that we may look at. Uh, city may charge user fees for, uh, services that were provided directly to people who benefit from it. So you want to, uh, go the auto flex and enjoy it, you may pay a fee, you may not pay a full cost to the fee, so you also subsidize and think about how much you want recovered in these areas. Um, but the people who benefit are paying into that a little bit, as well as maybe taxpayers in general. Uh, when you're calculating a rate, it must be reasonable to cover the cost of providing the service. Uh, you can't say, well, a billing permit costs this, but we want to charge it. You really have to keep them in line with the services that you're providing, uh, otherwise you can get a lot hurt. Um, I am in the works of, of getting a consultant on board for a citywide cost recovery policy, so we can talk about how do we, how do we give recovery on our user fees? Is it ten percent for one area, a hundred percent for another? Um, so that's going to work as well as starting to plan how we start bringing these around the council conversation, uh, so look forward to that soon. Some examples are, of user fees or plan of use permits, admissions, model rentals, special events, uh, fees, legalizing, bigger brands, and those kind of things, uh, in our organization. Next is rates. Rates are, are usually a consumption base. You want so much in water, you pay a rate per thousand gallons, so it's generally a rate based conversation of what you set. Um, it tends to be more inclusive of, of full cost recovery, uh, versus just partly cost recovery. A lot of times it's, you're directly benefiting, so you're going to pay a hundred percent, uh, into those costs. Uh, tends to be inclusive of the operation, maintenance, capital, CIP, debt service, all those types of things when you're setting your rates. Um, but customer class can vary, how much they pay is based on the demand they put into the system, so customer classes can vary, but generally they're paying for their consumptions. Uh, these are most commonly used in our, uh, enterprise funds across the organization. Bitch, it was upside down, so that means I should have added five. Uh, state shared revenues, this is a big portion of, of what we get in our general funds, as well as the highway user revenue fund, uh, we talked about that. Uh, there's formulas where a portion of sales tax, income tax, the auto lieu, which is registration tax, and HERF. State collects, is distributed back to city based on formulas and so forth. Uh, but they, uh, always talk about changing rates or changing, uh, you know, income tax is a big conversation, uh, those could impact us over. Uh, taxes, uh, there's a covenant toolbox items, the private property tax is one, uh, we had a conversation, uh, a week or so ago about our capacity with, you know, private property tax. Uh, this is adopted by councils, doesn't require voter approval, uh, but it does require posting notices, uh, that we have to do. The state allows us to increase the levy, the revenue that we bring in by two percent annually, uh, and once you, if you don't use it, it just stays and it adds to the next year. Uh, our current capacity that we could have a rate increase, we don't have it in our budget built in, uh, we are not planning at this time, about six hundred dollars capacity. Secondary property taxes, another one, we'll talk about this a little bit more, but these are voter required approvals, uh, council can't just say we're going to assess these, we have to go to the voters, and we've been very successful recently with things we've taken. And so this tax can only pay back the debt on those bonds that voters approve, uh, and we must, must rate, match the rate to that debt service on annual basis, it's a little bit of order, and there are limits on how much we can have outstanding. Uh, then there's voter approved transaction privilege tax or sales tax, uh, that the city has as a toolbox that we use. We have several in place, we're going to talk about those in the, uh, election conversation, but, uh, that's another one in our toolbox. Uh, debt options, uh, debt options is a good way to fund things that cost a lot at one time, if you want to pay over time, uh, you could payers kind of pay into that after the debt service is in place, uh, but there's a lot of different types of debt we have in our toolbox, but the key is we can't just issue debt and not have it paid back, so when you issue the debt, you got to make sure you have the ongoing resource to pay back your debt, your, your total bond. Uh, we have revenue obligation, uh, debt, um, most of those don't need voter approval, except for our sales tax, we want to back debt with sales tax, we have to go to voters. Um, but otherwise, uh, the city can issue revenue bonds for water services, uh, in other areas, uh, as we want to deliver some major projects. Uh, several uses have been the business incubator, water, wastewater, and road repairs, pre-safety project, we issue debt to, to move things forward. Certificate of Participation is a debt we can do, uh, no voter authorization there, we do require, uh, to pledge our assets of the city, that we will make our payments and commitments, and the resource can maybe vary. These were used for courthouse, courthouse facilities, public state department is a big one here. Other debts, loans, uh, we've issued loans with us, one that we've used a lot over time. Uh, again, these we had to pay back, uh, you could pay these back with secondary property tax, but not usually that, that function. Capital leases, if you want to buy a piece of equipment and pay for it over time, uh, we can go into that type of agreement for debt financing. Uh, special appro- Uh special improvement districts, um we've done a couple of these over town, the downtown district, Aspen Sawmill and the, I think, Boloneero Sewer Improvement. This is one area that we've used this tool where we assess the property owners who get the benefit and then we pay our bonds back. But these get the full faith of the city on to pay those back. If they default, we have an option to go through and and from the property. But uh it does have our full faith. And there is an example in John Wesley Powell, we're talking to still developers out there, this may even come into council uh consideration of the cities in a deliberate project. They may want us to issue second there's letting improvement district bonds to fund their portion and pay us back over time. So more to come on that. Uh development fees or impact fees are our toolbox. Uh we've talked about these a little bit lately. Most recently, the public station for police and fire was renewed or increased in the fall of twenty twenty. Uh we are required to revisit these every five years, so at least we'll be coming back around. The city has set aside seventy five thousand dollars to do a to do a study and a conversation about integrating development agreements with impact fees. Uh we haven't moved this project yet, but it's something that may be coming forward uh as we look at this in our toolbox and consider this as a funding source. Uh development fees can also be used for areas as like breweries, parks and recreation facilities, uh street facilities, water, wastewater and stormwater. Capacity fees, those are only allowed for utility funds. Uh those are only allowed for water, wastewater and stormwater infrastructure. That's what we have in place now. Uh we use this way to uh pay for uh capital improvements versus development fee uh process, but similar in nature, but not opposite. Grants, I want to grant a lot, but there's there's a lot of funding agencies out there um that provide uh several types of grants, got your federal, state, county, local uh foundations. Uh a very active team, uh we appreciate your support, that section of management services and staffing and support. Uh federal grants, there are a magnitude of agencies and the federal have that how have their own type of uh funding that we can research and look for uh and and compete for. Our states does have some matching program, which is great. So when we go for a federal grant, sometimes we can get a matching fund to help deliver prizes and so forth, such as uh Ada Aeronautics and the AZ Smart Program. These grants could be a formula driven grants or an entitlement or competitive. Entitlements like our airports receive entitlements of funding from the federal government annually. Formula, those kind of things could be our like our CBPG grants. Uh or it's competitive, we're competing with all the other cities, counties and people out there. Generally, we like to use grants for uh capital projects, not necessarily operating costs. Uh grants are not always expected to be a long term solution to operating costs. And just uh last fiscal year as we closed our audit, we we received twenty two million federal in almost four million state local grants, uh so very active. Yeah, this is one I slide, uh state and federal formations, very familiar with that. You've been doing some work and we appreciate your enthusiasm out there. Uh but you know, states and federal governments have their annual legislative processes uh that they have in place, the budget process they do want. Unlike ours, but they do. And sometimes they have directed spending, uh sometimes they have entitlements that they put in there. Uh and we worked really well with our lobbyists in your one to help get that advocacy out there, to bring monies to Flagstaff. And so this is is really a great spot to get that funding. It doesn't come with debt service like others, uh loans and such would be. You know, providing grant application support, letters of support to congressional people. Uh so this is another toolbox item that we have.
It helped us make
Any questions on the revenue toolbox?
Who's waiting? I just made a quick comment to me. I think I and Mr. Johnson, I could keep the primary property tax uh low and not increase it. But I just pointed out that in effect, that's really a decrease in the tax. There's a the amount we tax is same. If buying power with inflation is diminished. So I mean, it might make sense to increase the amount we tax in proportion to uh inflation. Or it might make sense just to keep it the same and let its buying power actually decrease. End of comments.
I got a big risk, I'm really happy. That's all I was up there. Okay.
Is that politically sensitive?
It could be.
Okay.
It could be something that's out there.
And I realize that, but I just thought I'd point out the reality that if we keep it flat, it's really a decrease.
Can you give a quick round of applause for Sam and Andrew?
So, Rick, we are a little bit behind, so I'm curious if hopefully like this next second and twenty five minutes would suffice.
Same. Same.
For about twenty minutes, we're going to do our best to meet that goal. How's that sound?
Yeah. So I didn't get through it quickly, but a lot of this is is information that you've heard through the latching election information, but uh ballot measures, we just thought we'd at least approach this topic with council. Uh we don't have any specific things planned except for maybe the BBV tax. Uh but it's time that we start planning for uh future elections, November twenty twenty four. Uh we'll have opportunities to go for certain items such as tax increases or geo bonds. Um this is the opportunity. We want to get ahead of this, we do the right outreach, build the right teams and get a successful ballot measure passed. So one of the major items with a ballot measure is is our general obligation bond. Uh we talked that is a voter required approval. Um I'm going to talk about these bullet points. Again, you're very familiar with what you've seen in the past, but uh dental obligation bonds are debt financing uh opportunity. It gets paid back with our secondary property tax levy uh that we put out to property tax owners. Um we must receive that approval and only secondary property taxes can only be used to pay back geo debt. There is no other use of secondary property taxes for cities. Like I said there, you can only give back general obligation bonds. The state does have a limit on how much valuations of properties can go up. It's five percent capped, even though property values may be increasing. Faster than five percent, which I think we all agree, um it's capped at five annually. Uh and we can only assess the amount that we have to pay the debt on an annual basis. So we set that rate every year from voters, we want to say we're going to keep this level, but it is a a work in progress to keep it at that level. There's state statutory limits on a couple of components. We can go to uh twenty five percent of our assessed valuations. We can have in doubt outstanding in a year, it's a big number. Uh but these fund these types of of services and projects in our community. It's a two hundred and forty five million dollar debt we could have outstanding. Not recommended, but uh it is a big number. And then we got six percent, so they kind of broke it out. Uh these are areas that may be housing, climate and action uh fit under. There's seventy three million dollar issue capacity in this area. But we like to talk about policy limit. Uh from a policy standpoint, when voter electors, we we try and make a promise, we'll keep the rates within uh flat rates to pay back debt based on the projects that you approved. So currently our our policy is to stay at point eight zero 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 or below over time. Um this is based on our latest election, it used to be point eight three six six. Uh but we made a commitment to keep it lower over time. Uh based on that rate and um what we have um outstanding, we have about a total of uh forty million dollars in capacity to go to the voters uh next November if chosen to maintain that rate and deliver that amount of capital. Uh an additional rate, you know, not required to stay there, but if we want to do more projects above and beyond, a point one increase would be another seventeen million in resources over that time, just as an example. Here's an example visually of where our debt is is going to be structured. The blue is what we have outstanding, these are the obligations that we've already issued to pay back. Um we start issuing a lot of the uh bonds that were just approved. And I've been planning with our financial advisors, how do we fit that into the property tax rate over time? So you can see it starts taking up this box of of uh resources. The goal is that, okay, if that's what we have remaining, if you want to go to the voters and issue forty million dollars, I can very well keep that rate uh set. There are reasons that could cause it differently, but uh I feel comfortable with that. So get back to taxpayers, um our goal is to keep a steady rate so they know what their rate will be. Now their assessed valuation will change year to year, so they may pay more towards secondary property tax, but the rate is is unknown and we're going to do our best to keep it there. Uh it'll increase or decrease based on our valuation changes. Uh and as mentioned earlier, the state valuation increases cap at five percent. So that's one of those things for election, um it's in the toolbox, it's something a council could consider in the upcoming year. Uh just want to touch base on expenditure limitation, uh there was a little question about it at federal retreat. And but we're also having some some look at this if it's time to go back, but uh this is state mandated by the state in nineteen eighty, it limits how much the city can spend in a year. There are exemptions, uh bond funded things, uh her, there are exceptions to what's in that uh level of spend. Uh it does grow and increase over time, you know, they do do a CPA and population adjustments. Um and we have gone to the electors to increase this base, to take a permanent jump and and maintain that goal. We've done that three times in the past. Generally, it's related to a new tax coming up for increased rates that we got to keep up with where the road is not. If we exceed our expenditure limitation, it's a big deal. The state will hold an equal amount or so as we go over our expenditure limits. Uh so we calculate this every year at year end, we we present to the states, say, here we did find uh generally this spot. But it's it's been increasing in complications to maintain it underneath that level. And so we've had a lot of conversations with our our budget discussions this year. Uh as we grew our cash balances since COVID, we may not have been delivering as much projects as the cats have been coming in. Our revenues have been growing faster than we predicted over time. Um so we're seeing that as we start to see these uh this cash being used, we're going to start bumping up against that expenditure limitation. So we're going to be doing a lot of work. Randy's already started with it, trying to see if it's now the time to go to voters uh to ask for a permanent increase. Um I think we do, it is still a capacity in there uh for the short term, but we'll see over time. So our expenditure limitation in per next year is two hundred and thirty one million. Uh our budget is four oh six, so you can see there is that that difference. Uh those are those are the exact things uh from expenditure limitations such as our grants, debt funded uh projects. So that's just a heads up, uh that's our potential elections issues. And TPT, uh TPT is a voter required pilot. We are not looking to take any use to the voters, we are looking at the PPT tax and we'll talk about that in a minute. But I just wanted to recap, you know, these are the things we take to voters, they approve and we put in place and we deliver some great things. Uh our general fund sales tax, it does expire at one percent, expired twenty thirty five. Uh our transportation tax was recently renewed uh out till twenty forty one. Our transit tax uh was initially in May of two thousand as well as the transportation taxes. Uh they did expand over time uh and currently is is extended uh two thousand sixteen to twenty thirty. Uh but we heard they may be considering uh coming to ask you for maybe some change there. Road for the Street Safety was approved in twenty fourteen uh to help with our street infrastructure that expires twenty thirty four and our low tree overpass uh in twenty eighteen goes out in twenty thirty nine. And with that, I will hand it over to you.
Let's get back to Tyler.
I'm so confused and I also happy that Rick had a brain. Um that is a lot. Uh the bedboard and beverage tax is a two percent tax on lodging restaurants, so it's actually we tell us restaurants, bars and campgrounds, just so you know who's collecting that tax. And that is coming up for renewal in uh twenty twenty eight, but we want to get a a jump on it. So we're going to bring it to the voters and hopefully bring it to voters in twenty twenty six. If by some chance we're to fail, then we bring it back again in twenty twenty eight. I'm sorry, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty six. And thanks, I saw Rebecca Rebecca do that to me. Twenty twenty four. Fail us twenty twenty six. Got it. Um as you can see, uh we had about eleven point five million dollars that was generated through this tax and it helps to fund tourism visitor services, uh parks and recreation, some of economic development, some of economic development is general funded. It helps to um fund beautification, arts and sciences. So um a lot of the areas that are in the economic vitality division are funded through the BDB solely. We have no other funding mechanism, so for us it is very vital that this would get renewed. What we're also going to be uh doing, just so you're aware, uh we have a BDB logo that is just very old and I I apologize if I forgot to put the before the before and after, but this is the after. We actually have a BDB committee that we're working with that includes Rebecca's group, a lot of people from the economic vitality division as well as our creative staff. And we've decided to have a new logo created, um Greg has given us his blessing. And what we wanted to do for people when we start to do some marketing for them to understand why we like the BDB renewed, we wanted to be able to easily remind them the um programs that are already being funded by the BDB. What we often noticed is that there is so much being funded by BDB that the community doesn't even really realize. So for instance, you might go to um a a trail and you don't realize that the trail sign was not only the trails were not only kept because of the uh park's rent, but they were they were actually signed because of beautification. And so what we're going to do is we've created a BDB logo user guide that whenever someone asks for BDB funding for something, we'll say, sure, but we'd like for you to be able to represent us on whatever you're doing so that people understand where those those monies came from. We're not doing a good enough jobs for people to understand how important the BDB funding is and how it actually is being generated but going back into the community that we serve, we live. So um we check that off the box. We have a logo user guide, pretty darn extensive. So if we have somebody that needs to use it and they need us to walk through how we'd like for us to be represented, we will do that. And then pretty soon we're going to be creating a campaign that you'll see in print, digital, social, that will explain why you want to uh continue to renew this. It also helps even the the hotels, restaurants, bars and campgrounds that actually pay pay into this or pay to pay for this to understand um how vital it is. So I'll give you a quick example. If someone comes in to uh use a restaurant or to eat in a bar or whatever, that two percent actually will help go and maintain a a park that your child might be playing baseball on or assuming one day even some softball on. So we're going to be able to try to really show the correlation to what it does when you go out and you dine out, you do all these things and how it helps continue to make all of this very vital. We're going to show how it does the murals, how it does the beautiful art piece on the courthouse, so on and so forth. And pretty soon, I hope you've noticed, the uh beautiful fence that we're doing over at the the metal art fence that we're doing at the airport is getting installed right this minute. It is already looking so fabulous, Jen has been sending me pictures. And so something like that metal sign will actually show that there's something signifying that it was paid through BDB. And we're going to be doing more and more of this. So I guess what I'm asking today is for you just to have this heads up that how vital it is for us to get this renewed. The general client could not take on all of this and we would like to continue to um run these programs, um employ our staff and continue to do these great things for our community. Any questions? Any questions? So I'm glad.
So we charge this two percent tax on hotels, liquor and restaurants. I'd like to suggest that the part for restaurants be reduced to one and a half percent. Council discussion? That's my idea.
Can you repeat that?
So what I'm saying is keeping it two percent for campgrounds, liquor, hotels. But for restaurants, reduce it from two percent down to one and a half percent. I guess I'm paying an extra two percent every time I go out.
It'd be interesting to see the numbers crunched before having a real conversation about that.
Exactly.
It doesn't have to be today.
Mayor, Councilman Kirby, I mean, Rick's going to be more of an expert on how that all works than I do. I just wanted to throw something out. When we market for, for the destination and we market for all of the hotels, bars and, it's evenly marketed. I mean, we're, it would be very, probably very complicated for Discover Flagstaff to say, do we do five point, oh point five left for that, that, that group? I don't know if that just would get it really, really complicated, but I can always look into any, any idea. And I don't know if the bars would think that they're less worthy of the one and a half than the restaurants. So I see what you're saying, but I think there could be a discussion.
It'd be a huge cut in revenue.
It would be, and quite honestly, you mix it up. And the general fund make it up?
No, you have to digest your, tell your.
And, and, and staff. Just want to throw that idea out.
Well, I'm just one councilperson, but I'd be interested in listening to the other six, Andrew Rick. So if there's anything, it's really, it's nice. You're okay guys, seven council members, Andrew Rick. I'm kidding, of course, but in all seriousness, that's, I'd like to consider that. Yeah, to rest of council, that's a great file, we'll move on.
Should I move on to the mayor and then we'll back back around there?
Um, I think that this was one of the best things that Flagstaff ever did. And it does so many positive things throughout the community. I'm not interested in reducing that in any category at all.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm here too.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Matthews, it's very important that you understand what it's doing for the community. And we appreciate very much.
The mail is over, it sounds like.
Yeah, it looks like you are, so.
Great to hear, so for discussion, if council goes in agreement, we'll go on, it's fine. Hard feelings.
I appreciate, I appreciate your suggestion, and I appreciate everyone else's comments. And just so you know, we will be coming back and showing you some of the campaign, and if you have any ideas for us, while we're doing this, if you have people that are saying they understand something or whatever, we'd love for you to help and share that information with us, because the point is to make it crystal clear where these monies go and how they're being put back into the community to enhance their quality of life. Thank you. Oh, I wanted to say one thing, but we already put out dessert and the ice creams melting, so we did it just so that if we got ahead of our time, we wouldn't not have something for the afternoon.
Does that mean people need to go have brownies?
We just wanted you to know that people have already been digging it.
Let's, let's give a higher. So our next presenter is Chris Brody, who was before, while, while he comes up. Take two seconds, speaking of Better Business Bureau, turn to your neighbor and share, what is your favorite restaurant in town? Just share real quick, what is your favorite restaurant in town? Okay, I don't want to wrap up that conversation. So I would love for everyone to be aware that it was in fact Rick Tatter. It was in fact Rick Tatter who helped us save fifteen minutes on our agendas. Yeah, yeah. Roll over, right?
Yes.
Okay, so without further ado, Chris Brody, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, did I get answers in council? Thank you, appreciate the very best for last. We're going to talk about early base budgeting here, and we're talking about it a little bit of a different way than we have before. I feel like whatever I've talked about this council over the last few years, it's been a lot of, here's what we're doing right now, here's how the system works because it's a little complicated. My presentation will be pretty short. I'm hoping that it ends in kind of a nice robust discussion about what the future of early base budgeting is for the city of Flagstaff. We're coming to a point this year where the fourth year of implementations, and we're looking for a better direction in what we want to do for the, you know, the short medium term future, the next two to four years or so with this system. So, but what we're thinking, then we'll, I'm hoping that most of the time we'll be taken out by, by nice discussion rather than me just talking at you, as has been what's, ones like that over the last two days. So a very short history of how we got here, as I mentioned, we're in year four. In twenty nineteen, we started this system and approved some very, you know, a rough draft, if you will, of our priorities and objectives. And then those were refined in twenty twenty, which is, right during the COVID pandemic, council approved the seven priorities and the many objectives below each of those priorities that we still use today. And we're at a point now where we're ready to revisit those, but to consider whether those are still appropriate for our community and whether they reflect the needs of the city and the organization and the people we serve. So, and, and this will be a recurring thing as long, as long as we continue to use PBB. I think it's important that with the regularity, we go through and decide, is this door open for us? Is there something that's missing, that's double counted? That way we can make sure that this system is, you know, is designed to score the things we're doing and the money we're spending based on the needs of our community. So we can evaluate every now and again as the needs of our community change and our, of organizations, whether those priorities are still appropriate or whether they could use a better refinement or a larger refinement. So that's kind of where we're heading, heading with this. Focus on this one, we've seen this graph a lot, a lot of the seven priorities and objectives. And I'll, I'll note that even though this is presented as one pie chart here, it's really, we'll, really can think of this as two, because this high performing governance one is considered in a different circumstance than the other six. These are all for community programs, this one is for those things that are internal to the city. So every program is not scored on all seven of these priorities. It's scored on either this one or the remaining six. So really you could, you could separate that one out and have it kind of as two, two different systems depending on what type of program we're scoring it against. Again, the objectives below each one, this, this graph is shown a little bit pixelated on the screen. About here, the high performing governance one, each of these below it, again, the things that we evaluate those internal organizational facing priorities against. So there's really two questions, or, or two areas of direction that we're looking for today. The first one is on the general approach you'd like us to take over this summer as we look to refine each priority and objectives. So the first, this first questionnaire is kind of two options, maybe a little bit rare in between a little bit, but we can either attempt to amend existing priorities and objectives, take that as a good starting point, work on what we have, or we can throw it out the window, we can start anew. So there are pros and cons to each one. I'm, I'm not here to really recommend one to you, one of the other, just to give you an honest representation of what that endeavor would need for us. So we're going to amend our existing priorities. Obviously, that'll be less work for city staff, it'll be quicker, it won't require as much staff time. If you think that our existing priorities have a lot of good in them that we can build off of, that might be a good option. We can take the best parts that we have right now and to work off of those. Where if you think that there's room for a larger imagination, or, or if there's bigger problems you see with our version objectives, we can start fresh, we can do either one. So if, if, if you want to go back and look at that chart here, later we'll get to the discussion part. But that's the first question we're asking is, should we start scratch or should we just attempt to refine the system we currently have? And the second option is the process will go about in this. Make no mistakes, I've got community to council and council to community, both of these would end in council. So the first one really, the, the second rather, would be really council to community to council again. So you will be the last stop come the fall to approving these and making any small tweaks at the end of the end. But this is a question really of, before we do our outreach and try to engage the citizens and the organizations and the other stakeholders that exist in our community, do you want to have input first? And these are two independent questions. So it's really kind of a little, a grid exchange, I'll show you that, that demonstrates what the four options really are. But the thing to yourself, do you want to have the first say and the last say? Or do you want to go to the community first, see if they're there?
Can you take it back to the Wheel of Fortune?
Absolutely.
Just something that I'll point out is that priorities, at least similar, very similar to these, have been expressed by the community since Flagstaff twenty twenty, the visioning process. And in just about every process after that. So I, I feel like, I feel like, I mean, it could be reworded and maybe some of the bullet points could be refined, but I really feel like our community has said repeatedly that this is pretty much what they want for the future of their community.
Okay, so, sorry, I think you were first, then.
So, do you know, or can you give me just a brief explanation of, down on the next page, like, how did that list of details of each priority get developed?
Sure, so I'll, I'll go to the next page here, and I apologize if it's difficult to read this. It, it's a little pixelated, so I'm sorry if that's the case. The seven priorities across the top of the screen are broader. They are general ideas of what you want, the ones below are specific ways to get to them. So if you look at.
But who determined that?
We, we had an outreach process to the community, it wasn't as robust, we would have liked to do a bit. The combination of hearing from constituents, community, and going back to council, figuring the priorities from. Sorry, is that where the answer you're looking for is?
Yeah, no, I just, the, the process evaded me when it was happening during COVID, and so I just was trying to get up to speed.
Right, I, I don't think that that's, I think.
Rick's going to say.
And I think he.
The initial conversation was a half day or full day retreat with councils. And we broke out into groups, we talked about our community as a whole, we did the whole whiteboard stuff, and we came together with those conversations to first identify the pillars, what are the pillars that we want to focus on. Then council looked at those and they looked at similar objectives that were spoken throughout that conversation for that day. And so they started to build, okay, this is what we're talking about as a, as a council, as a group. And that built the objectives of how we deliver those. Then we just refreshed it with the community in that process. Having them look at this, they gave us some suggestions for, for tweaking a little bit, and then we brought it back. Does that help with the initial to where we are today?
Yes.
And, and thank you, I was not here for that, so I can't speak to my memory of what was, because I was. Thank you, thanks, Rick, thanks for answering your question.
Yeah, so if it's time for a comment, so I think the pillars, whether they're reworded or not, look pretty generic in that that's what the community, you know, with support. Maybe the details under it, then going back and having the, you know, having an open public conversation of, are those focuses working how they wanted them to, or do they not agree with them? Or do they want some changes? That's what I meant.
Okay, excellent, and Joseph McCarthy, do you still have a question or comment, right? This point, or would you like to, hold on?
My comment is, don't fix it if it ain't broke. Which translated into English means those seven basic categories, I think, have been hashed out. I think they're good, I don't see any reason they might go all over again. So, and you know, I'm basically agreeing with the, the two council members that you spoke, that, yeah, we may want to refine some of that fine print stuff, but at least for the seven basic categories, I think they're fine.
Okay, thank you, so. We're out again.
I think the instinct to want to revisit this is really important, you know, thank you, thank all of you for doing that. We're still kind of at the beginning of this process, I don't think we're too far removed from the starting line. I certainly feel that way as a council member who is involved in these initial conversations. These, you know, in terms of the wheel that we invented on the previous slide, I don't feel like that needs to be reinvented at this time. But I think that will continue, the appetite for looking at substantive, substantial changes to this will increase over time as a function of newer councils coming on board. So thank you for bringing this forward, I think it's an important part of our muscle memory. But at this time, it, it feels a little premature to, to do a reinvention.
That's helpful, I, I do have a small graphic here, I want to show this, that is to show back to this slide as well, but this is what we kind of look for, what these processes could look like. And what I'm hearing yourself for is, is that you're wanting to stay in this left, this left half of it as opposed to the right half of it, which is, which is, which is great, you know, as city staff, we're here to fulfill the wishes of council. But we wanted to give you an idea of what that would look like for, so you have an idea of how much work it would be and how much change you would see, and Greg, I think this is.
But yeah, this is just going to give more substance to comments already shared by council, and thank you, council, for waiting in. You know, under the premise that community key priorities are never going to shift radically, you know, absent like some significant historic event, we can and should expect those priorities to remain relatively intact. And that's why I think the, the tops of the pillars or the pie chart really doesn't change. The other thing I would, would add to the conversation though is, you know, we are four years into priority based budgeting and decisions have been made upon priority based budgeting. We had a great presentation yesterday about, with the quartiles, bless you, and then all the programs and projects that, and where they stack up with this. So the, the thought that we would radically or abruptly change the priorities raises all kinds of questions in my mind about what about the decisions that have been made, you know? Budgeting from year to year is a continuum, we, we don't start fresh and have, have a deadline or a finish line. As we know, especially from discussion of late, projects and programs span many years. And we're, we were just looking ahead many years. And so it, I'm just sharing the observation that, boy, that would really throw things on, on their head if we were to all of a sudden change our priorities, you know, after having made so many decisions.
Sure, absolutely, and to give you a perspective of the reason that, this is the question that people have been wanting to ask, was we wanted to do this in a way to kind of acknowledge that, that there had been a few growing needs with this process. And, and it has not been perfect in any way, so we just wanted to, this, do this as an opportunity to revisit whether or not there were issues that we need to tackle in this one. But it, it sounds like, what I'm hearing i- 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 is that. But it sounds like, what I'm hearing is that we're on a good path. We want to stay on that good path. And I didn't mean to put this up here as an endorsement of any of those things, just as the opportunity for comment if it was a-
Good discretion.
Okay.
Chris, we go back to pie chart.
Yes.
So I'm just going to say this, and this could be very unpopular, but the only rub I had on this, because these are our equal priorities. I understand it. And we have focused our budget based on these seven priorities. The thing that I have an issue with, because I feel that it creates then and imbalances after scoring our projects, our funding decisions on how they meet these priorities, that then they backdoor wrap around and then have to match again to sustainability and the carbon neutrality plan, which was not a voter approved. I think that they should stand equally without that added component to then wrap around and match to that.
Okay.
And I know that's not a popular comment, but I feel as a council member I need to say it, and I've heard it from the community too, that seven pillars, seven equal priorities, we should be scoring to that and not give sustainability or carbon neutrality an extra boost.
Right, and so we, our programs are scored based on these seven, or, you know, either the six or the one that I can't remember what program it is. And then we do go back and also consider our emergencies, our housing emergency and our climate.
Well, it doesn't, no, it doesn't say that. When, the chart that I saw when this was first brought out in February-
On the next page?
Maybe, I don't remember where it shows up. There's not a housing, we're not scoring to housing, we're only scoring to carbon. And we have two emergencies.
And I think I said where you're getting it, where, okay.
Right.
Where-
We talked about housing this whole two days, and I realized that most of it doesn't fall into our budget categories, but it is an equal and probably a more prices emergency in our community with the residents here than anything else. And yet, that's kind of left out of the equation.
I see the chain because I-
Okay, so I just wanted to help clarify for council, we don't score against the carbon neutrality plan. What we're doing is through this budget process, trying to identify which of those requests support the carbon neutrality plan, so that we can tell you in this process that this is how many of our requests actually support that endeavor. So you don't want to give council the impression that we score against this and then they get scored again. The scoring that we showed you is just solely on these key community priorities.
That makes you feel weird. But we're still missing housing.
We are, we are. We think we're on that.
Yeah. Not missing housing, that's livable communities. It's-
Including the age of the community.
I mean, there's like two or three of them that tried right into housing.
But Jim, my point is, that is on there, and so is our carbon goals. But then after that, we have another component that goes back and says, are all these, how do they match to our carbon neutrality goals? And we have two crises, housing and-
I just turned over my right shoulder.
There were four, but we say this is advancing that crisis. And I'm just saying that I don't, housing is a big deal.
Right.
And I don't see the equal weight here. It's there, and sustainability's there. But when we go back and then report, and this is how it's advancing our carbon neutrality goals, then it should also say, and this is how it's advancing our housing crisis equally. We have two crises. Christi, Christi.
Why can't you just clarify? I think what you're getting to here is that when a budget request comes forward for new funding, the program that, the more programs that request is needed have a score that comes out to a quartile. And then after that, there's also a section in that request where we ask that division, how does this request tie into the carbon neutrality plan? That's what you're getting to. We don't have a similar question for housing. So it's really two different questions, you know? One of them is the priorities objectives, and the second one is a different question asked about, about climate that's not asked about housing. So I think, I see where you're getting at, where that's kind of hit on twice that same topic. But I think that is more of a process as opposed to relating specifically to the priorities and objectives, which is, I think, what we're trying to do right now. So we can certainly take that and consider in the future whether or not we should add a question for housing or whether, or whether those frequencies are well captured in our community priorities and objectives, which is area we could go as we look to reevaluate this perhaps, is to incorporate those, to clear the frequencies here in a way we didn't in 2020. Or we could look at changing the process.
It's just that we could talk about it for a couple of decades and we just keep talking.
Yeah.
Is, I want to see, we're doing leaps and bounds for carbon neutrality.
Right.
We're just talking about housing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just a great counter. What we're trying to do here is digitize the analog world. The bottom line is we have to use our judgment staff, and we as council have to use our judgment and keep these things in the back of our mind. But it isn't like, okay, we can make this number this exactly or this exactly. It's an analog world, not a digital world.
I just wanted to make-
That's the best I can hear that, yes.
I agree that the housing plan needs to be part of the discussion. And since we have declared two emergencies, housing should be right up there with sustainability in whatever way that looks like when staff is taking a look at what they're going to present to us.
And if I could just, just to show, these are great conversations. I think these conversations about these and what these capture, that's the conversation we're going to have over the period of several months with our community this summer. So we're not going to be amending these priorities objectives here in this room today.
Settle down.
Then there will be, there will be a lot of time for a lot of input and a lot of consideration on all of these specific topics. I love the passion, I love, that's where we're going. If I, if I could ask, just, what we're looking forward to right now is, which of these four frameworks, one of them has to be in here? Would you like to, I've kind of got to present, so we want these two. So within our process, where are we going to hear all of these specific things about each of our individual topics? You know, would you like us to?
Upper left.
So it's a, upper left. So, but that would entail a completely, if you want the first say in the matter, if you want your comments heard before we take this out to the community, so we have kind of, kind of a confined area of, you've kind of told us what areas you'd like us to focus on looking at before we go to the community. I don't know exactly what that would look like, but I think that our timeline would be that we would try to come back to you before your break this summer. And that may be at a work session, it may be, it may be a smaller retreat in itself. Maybe it would be a half day or something along those lines, where we can have this robust discussion about which of these issues should be refined, which ones are capital problem, which ones are not, which ones maybe are double counted, all that kind of stuff. We then take that information and go and do our outreach to the community, which would largely be over the summer and probably overlap quite a bit with your summer break. Then we come back in the fall before the end of the calendar year and hammer out the final details and figure out whether there are any changes to that pie graph or that total chart. So we can do that, or if you want us to go to the community first, we can begin that process and we would just see what the follow is, what the community wants, and you can take those bases and put them together to make the whole puzzle. So I've heard kind of one, one vote, you know, one vote, if you will, or one person saying they would like council first and to keep, or be the basis of base. Now, your comments, yeah, council, McCarthy.
So before I get into the X Y thing, I just want to quickly say that some of these things you just talked about, like housing and climate change, does not, they may not be in the seven, but they definitely should be in the dropdown, you know, the columns. So as far as this chart, I won't get into reasons why I can, if you want, if necessary, but I'm an upper left person.
Okay.
Upper left, thank you for bringing this to us, and it's a good conversation.
Three hundred, upper left, upper left, that's okay. That, that's, but are you, any other comments on this or for questions?
I'm going to ask council staff.
In that case, I want to briefly talk about what our outreach will look like. And let you know what, the way we're going to try to involve the community this summer so that they have their voices heard, that we can hear many voices in as many positive ways as possible. So I think based on what I'm hearing today, we'll come back to you. We'll, we'll schedule something for probably, maybe to talk to you about where you want to start, what the areas you think give the most work or you want us to focus on. We'll then take that, that and go to the community over July and August and go back one page here. And we're going to try to engage the community in a lot of different ways. So we'll probably have a few open houses. I would say at least two probably where the community can come and have their voice heard in person. We might, you know, that may involve whiteboards and all kinds of those kind of things where, you know, people can submit cards or they can put sticky dots. There's all the different kinds of ways that we can engage the community in person. We'll have an online forum that'll be available for the duration of it. So if people just want to log on real quick, take a quick survey and submit what they want, they can do that. We'll make sure that's available in English and Spanish, just like we've done with other, other things that we've done. We'll, we'll, we'll have this on social media. We'll really publicize this so the community knows it's happening. This is an area that we didn't really have the opportunity in 2020 to engage the community as much as we wanted to because it was, it was during that pandemic. So we're really hoping this year that we can make this to a really robust conversation with the community and hear from them in all the different ways that they agree and disagree on things. I'm sure we'll produce videos. I don't see former councilor Shimon in the room, but I'm sure he'd be happy to hear that as well. And we'll try to reach out to the groups and organizations that are active in our community, whilst the business community, that are activist groups, our volunteer groups, all of them have a say as well. And then we'll take, so we'll start with what your initial feedback is. We'll go to them, hear all the feedback they have, come back to you with a few options proposals, and a few areas that you can refine, variant, and then we'll look to finalize a revised, or maybe not that revised, series of priorities objectives that we can use for the next two, four years. But we're hoping this becomes kind of a regular checking point. And because this was the first one, we're looking for this kind of direction on how much of a change you wanted to make and what process you want us to go through. This way, every couple of years, you know, every, every council, every other council maybe will have the opportunity to refine these. That'll make sure that we continue to be providing the best services we can to work. So aside from that, either, this was the end of my presentation, the conversation I wanted to have. Any other questions or comments for me before, yeah, council members?
Just really quickly, as far as the outreach portion of this goes, I would just really encourage as much engagement as possible with the neighborhood associations. And particularly, I'm thinking back to our conversation yesterday and the community partners that were included as part of the budget. So groups like the Shelter Service and the Live Like a Curiant and all of those different community partners that we rely on to both support our community goals and get the word out about different things that are happening, to bring them into this process as well, to ensure that we're hearing from those different groups and really focusing in on those localized needs. I think when we tend to focus in on some of the community partners, without intending to, but I think some of those voices get missed. And it's really important in my mind to see us really focus in on utilizing particular neighborhood associations and groups like them to get the word out to those communities to make sure that they have a seat at that table.
Absolutely. And when we come back to you in August, in Legion, we'll come with a more, it'll be a more detailed plan in this. We'll have exactly what we want to do and we'll give you the opportunity to provide any input for anything that you may have missed or you want us to make sure that we hit specifically as we begin that process. So we'll make sure you have that, you didn't put that as well.
And I was just going to say, and let's think about how we might include our youth. There are lots of summer programs that's going around that will be happening this summer. Boys and Girls Club, rec scissors. It might be really fun to hear what they have to say, we'd be surprised.
I always love getting, hearing the-
Everybody too.
They have great ideas, so. Okay, with that, I thank you for, thank you for your time. And I'm sure wherever you are on your schedule, but that's it for these.
Well, thank you for the perfect timing, everyone. And congratulations on all of us being concluded. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and all city staff. Good afternoon, my name is Eric Wolpert. I'm the Executive Director of Capitaine Humanity of Northern Arizona. And I'm here simply to say thank you. Thanks to the city manager and the entire housing staff for finding a solution to provide funds needed to support the depleted Affordable Housing Incentive Fund. These dollars are crucial in keeping the cost of homes attainable for our working poor families here in Flagstaff. I would emphasize the need for ongoing funding to support this program is crucial as we continue to build starter home neighborhoods into the future. Thanks to everyone in the room today for expressing their passions and financial resources needed in making Flagstaff a better community to live, work, and recreate. We can always provide better services to our Flagstaff residents and should always strive for yourself. Finally, thanks to our elected officials for continuing to make the commitment towards workforce reform mode housing. Our housing problems continue to get worse by the day, so we must all act now partnerships that have a shared outcome. For us to end that housing emergency, we must provide opportunities for families to thrive and grow. With all the gratitude in the world, it's time for us together to build solutions for our hard-waired Flagstaff residents. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Anybody?
I don't have any of the cards, I don't see anybody online. Just checking real quick if they missed anybody in the room.
At this time, it is our FICA break where we break to connect and not talk business for about 15 minutes. And I would suggest we come back at 2:05, we're about 10 minutes in. Enjoy the break? Enjoy your FICA? Okay. All right, welcome back from break. So the remaining of our agenda is that City Manager Gray Clifton will be running this through the council parking lot discussion and review and confirm of council direction. That will conclude the meeting for today, followed by an executive session for councils. So to make sure that we are awake and lively, we have one last, that settles it, vote for this-
There's probably another one.
Budget retreat. This one I'm really curious about, I have a very strong opinion about this one, so I'm going to try to stay neutral. Are you ready? Is a hot dog in a bun a sandwich? Is a hot dog in a bun a sandwich, right? So if you believe that a hot dog in a bun should be considered a sandwich, please raise your hand for yes. One, two, three, four, five, six. Raise your hand if you do not believe a hot dog in a bun is a sandwich. All right, it looks like that settles it according to this room.
If it's not a sandwich, what is it?
That is the ultimate question, Councilmember McCarthy. If it's not a sandwich, what is it? A hot dog. All right, thank you so much for playing and being gracious. So without further ado, City Manager Gray Clifton, do you get to start?
It's a sandwich. I'm just kicking this off. This is actually council's part of the agenda. This is actually, uh, council's part of the agenda where you get to share with us your, your ideas, comments, add-ons, things that we'd like to revisit that may even be touched on, or perhaps things that haven't been touched on at all. Um, we've covered a lot of ground over the last day and a half. Uh, just going back to my own notes and not recapping stuff here, but you know, a great update on revenues and projections and theories going into that, uh, which led to a very good discussion about some of the challenges we're having with, uh, our employment, you know, both in retention and recruitment. A nice discussion about paying benefits that led to very, uh, appreciated discussion about investing in our employees. Um, really wanna take a, a moment to thank council for your, uh, great support in all of that. That is a good dialogue. Uh, we chatted then about some market adjustments as well, the pay for performance. Um, went in, we heard from our employee advisory, uh, committee. And, uh, then chatted about the general fund request, the one-time versus ongoing. From that, we segwayed into a lot of priority-based budgeting discussion, the operative discussion, looking at the core tiles and how our expenditures were ranking, then taking it down to a greater depth, uh, as to the programs and projects and how they score within our key community priorities. That was very good. Uh, we chatted then about community service organizations, took in some council direction on a couple of those. Thank you very much. Uh, we, we heard loud and clear were your preferences and we appreciate that. Um, a big discussion then about, uh, this segwayed into, uh, today's discussion, but we, we chatted a lot about carbon neutrality and where all the expenditures fit advancing our carbon neutrality goal. Uh, that led to the discussion, uh, this morning, a continuation of that. Um, today we focused a lot on unfunded projects, looking ahead, things that are either on our doorstep or things that might be, uh, ways out there on the horizon. Uh, but a lot of unfunded things, uh, and as Shane and I, I pointed out to council, it's important to have these discussions about what is not budgeted, but what is nevertheless a priority or something to be considered, uh, as we move forward. And we had some nice presentations there. Thank you for your input on the Joe Montalvo site. Uh, stay tuned on some of these other ones. And then right along with that, we segwayed into, um, long-term revenue, uh, planning and what possibilities are out there. Rick walked you through, through the revenue toolbox, and I think that was good. We have just finished with a return to priority-based budgeting, bringing it back to the key community priorities and a process that lies ahead. Thank you for your input. Now, all of that is what transpired over the last day and a half. We would like to open it up to you, council, and, and these end of the, the retreat, uh, parking lot items or add and delete items. Again, it's your forum for you to share with us anything you would like and we'll, we'll try to take good notes. Please.
Um, you wanna go first?
Ethan.
Okay. Uh, earlier in the meeting, I said I wanted to reserve judgment on the STEM facility in Sunnyside.
Yes.
Well, I'm gonna go on record that I'm fully supportive of doing that now.
Thank you, council.
Okay, now I'll take your comment. Uh, we have been together for two days to talk budgets. We've been together for several months talking about budgets on various all-day meetings. And the one thing that sticks out to me is I'd like to see if there's some way we could give our employees a little bit bigger raise. And that's not just because I love them, which I do. But it's because I'm concerned about the statistics we saw where a lot of people are being offered jobs and we turn it down, probably because of not enough money to live in this community or whatever. So long story short, I would like to see if there's some way we could squeeze a little bit more money out to give our employees a little bit bigger raise. Now, I know that needs to be done across the board, or it's like in the, in, two years ago, we gave the police department bigger raise than other employees. So in, I'll lay this up to the city manager. It may be that certain departments need this more than others. But my general comment is if there's any way to do it, I would like to squeeze some money out to give a little bit more to our employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the comment and thank you for the, that underlined the comment. Uh, any other response to that? And I'll, I'll get to your question, Councilmember, after. Do we wanna chat about that or do we just take it as a, a note to be memorialized?
Well, my. Supported, actually, so.
Oh, you were, okay, let me call on you then.
Uh, so, yeah, I, I agree with that. And one of the concerns that I had with, uh, in the conversation yesterday was just the move from a merit-based increase that started at 3% to now the performance-based that starts at 2%. Um, and that would be my concern is that folks that have been performing, getting that merit base could see that as almost a demoted value of, of the work that they were doing. Um, to see, even though it's just 1%, but still to see that lower rate. So I don't know if there's room to look at, either if it was just starting at 3% or just bumping up what that looks like across the board. Um, I'd love to see if there was room to do that.
Thank you.
So that's just my comment on that. And we have another, but if we wanna talk more about.
So just for clarity, what you're suggesting is that going from 2% to 4% range, you're not comfortable with the floor being 2%? Okay. Duly noted and, and thank you for that comment.
Free of thought.
I see you're reading back there, uh, deep in thought. We will, Nancy, uh, Russell with, and the entire budget team, uh, right now is deep in thought. But, uh, we hear the comments, uh, maybe we have a little more discussion of it. You started off by saying there needs to be more. You, you expressed, uh, and thank you for your comments, uh, discomfort with the floor being 2%. Then you have added on, maybe the ceiling gets raised to 5%.
Uh, that's what I would like to do, but I also understand, you have the realities of there's not going to be so much money.
That's right.
I understand that. But I'm just asking you to do what you can. And maybe that's half a percent, maybe it's a quarter percent. I don't know what it is. But, um, I'm concerned about it.
Okay. I'm gonna attempt to bifurcate this discussion into two things and invite input from, uh, everybody. Um, one thing is, uh, revisiting the floor of the, of the paper performance, which is targeted to be 2%. And the other is revisiting the ceiling, which is targeted to be 4%. Maybe we could have, uh, separate both and, and have a little bit more input.
Why would just, and I'm not, uh, saying anything against what they say 'cause I think our employees are our most valuable resource. Um, but I just did wanna bring it back up that we are also giving them a market adjustment.
Yes, thank you.
So it may be the pay for performance is 2% to 4%, but they're also getting a market rate increase, right?
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that up and was gonna do the same. And that is across the board and that is, uh, something that, uh, will be entirely independent of performance or merit. Mayor, please.
Um, I am generally in support of as much money as you can read from the budget for staff. It's, I told you before, it's a priority for me. I know it's a priority for staff, I mean, for.
Of course, it is.
Right, yeah. Uh, priority for council and, um, so whatever that looks like when, I mean, I guess what I wanna say is that you should all feel supported to present us with, um, something that you think is enticing to employees and fair for employees. And I, I think in general that we would always support it. And in terms of the, the budget as a whole, I am concerned about all the capital projects that we have that are not funded. And, um, and, and I know that staff is working really hard to figure out how to fund them. Um, but I just put it out there that we have a lot of needs and, um, and a lot of desires. Um, we have some that are so critical that it's not really, um, a desire. It is an absolute necessity and it just causes me, um, some little bit of anxiety.
Yeah, apologize for the anxiety. I think it's properly felt, uh, and not an overreaction. I, I think there's, there's anxiety, uh, there's excitement, but there's anxiety all, all at the same time. Perhaps, uh, a place to return on this discussion of unfunded fu- future projects is for staff to take, provide a little more analysis to it as to where are the essential projects that are truly not discretionary? Waste water treatment plant would be a great example, but there are other ones. Versus some of the projects that might be a little bit more discretionary and maybe make it a little bit easier than to talk about, you know, prioritizing those future unfunded projects through that lens.
Maybe change the slide title to not yet funded projects.
Not yet funded projects. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for your comments. Uh, back to, uh, staff, you know, when we do have this 3% market adjustment, I, I think I'd like to, to hear from council, is there a strong desire to revisit the pay for performance structure? Or if there is a desire as a mayor articulated to do as much as we can for staff, just gonna put it out there with the market adjustment be the, the, the way to address that versus adding on to pay for performance. Market adjustment, of course, being one-time might be a little bit easier, uh, rather than ongoing than, than the pay for performance is something that's in our five-year plan. So that's a big change to make. I like the mayor's directive situation stated it. I wouldn't wanna get descriptive about it. Okay, that's really good to figure out. Thank you.
My feelings.
Head or not, that is, that is our minds to it. Uh, I wanna thank you on behalf of the entire staff for sharing the conversation you just did. It, uh, it's more than the compensation study is, or, or, or issue. It's, uh, the, uh, the unanimous show of support for staff. I know that's greatly appreciated, so thank you.
So above and beyond that, um, I know we have a petty cash fund that, that's the wrong term for it, I'm gonna give.
The council initiative.
Council initiative, yeah. Um, I'm always thinking about the best ways to spend that. Of course, it's a group decision. In the past, uh, we've supported the Flagstaff Trails Initiative. I, I think that's a worthy, um, continued beneficiary of our funding along those lines. It might be interesting to, uh, be in touch with the Arizona Trail Association to make sure that we're, uh, giving, uh, Arizona Trail Through Hackers the red carpet treatment as they're coming through town, um, as, as we develop the area. A lot of the trail here within the city limits. Um, those are just two thoughts right now for, for that funding. Uh, and I don't really have a sense of how much money we're talking about in terms of our parking lot and where to play the shuffle game. So I, I can't get more specific about that. But, uh, I've been very pleased over the past couple of years with those parking lot conversations and, and working through those items. Um, and there's nothing particularly new on the horizon. I would like to know if Lowell requires further support for the continued development of the Discovery Center.
We don't think so.
Okay. Um, that's what I figured, or you would've brought it up.
We would've brought it up. We haven't heard anything and I see Rick Tatter, uh, shaking his head, so.
Yeah, I already spoke to them and they were very helpful, but, yeah.
Thank you, Rick.
You basically said as much yesterday. I just wanted to, uh, cross my Ts there. Um, that's all, that's all I have personally at this time.
Thank you. Can we, uh, set the trail initiative discussion then? Uh, my recollection is we allocated $5,000 out of the council initiative on that last year, Rick, or Brandy. Do you recall? Something like that. Heads are nodding. Uh, is, is there a desire to do something, uh, like that this year?
I just wondered if we have to, House member, uh, House wasn't finished with their two-part question.
Well, I do apologize.
That's okay. Let's finish this and then I'll.
Please forgive me. Either way, I'm done. So apologize if those. Back to you, councilmembers.
Okay, uh, so the only thing that I had, uh, outside of, you know, I, I do wanna see us have more conversations when it comes to what we can do, um, budget-wise to support advancing, uh, the, the tenure housing plan and efforts for affordability for the city. Um, the other item that did come up, and it was actually a citizen comment that, that raised this was, you know, we all just saw what happened with the recycling plant. And I don't know what our conversation is right now in terms of how we move forward with that.
You're about to have that conversation. Yeah. I didn't mean to curtail your question.
No, absolutely.
Yeah, now that I know where you're going with it, that is our executive session.
Can I ask how much is in that fund? Cause I love your initial before.
Thank you, councilmember. Uh, I believe it's 20,000.
And we gave 5,000 last year to the trails. Is that what I mean?
My recollection is council expended everything last year and 5,000 of it went to trails. I'm trying to remember what the other.
The other, I meant to the care unit.
The care unit, I'm saying Shane, it's the year before it went to victim services.
Yes.
Yes.
And the care unit money is going towards their evaluation of that program to identify any gaps.
So let's look at what else in the community might need some funds. And if we've given to those two units before, let's look at some other places where we could spend some of those funds, kind of like in a rotation, you know? Everybody gets turned at some point in time.
Thank you. Other input on that?
So I agree with that instinct. I, I wouldn't want some of these organizations to become too comfortable, uh, receiving one-time funding over and over again.
So I think that is, uh, please. No, you're good. Heidi has a comment on trails, Susan Joplin.
Hi, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I just wanted to let you know that Discover Flagstaff does their pledge for the wild. And all of those monies, if someone donates, it goes to the trail system as well. And I could get a total on that, um, and share it with you. I don't have it today on how much money they're getting, how they're angling from us. And then, um, um, I just lost my train of thought, Rick, so we.
Trails, trails.
Trails, Benny.
Carrie Lee.
Oh, so we also, um, marketing-wise, we also did a bunch of materials for trail etiquette for them as well. So that was free of charge and that was painted with PDPs, just so you're aware. So there is some other activity happening with that initiative through our Discover Flagstaff team.
Is there, you know, 20,000 is a lot to, like, to push them, but not so much for the city. But I was just thinking more in a broader-based community, like either, is there something we can do with that money, do any good to the two parts impacted communities from the floods? Um, and or in our four designated, um, communities, Southside, Sunnyside, um, the others, is there, you know, like a grant to give them for a small project to do something to? I don't know if there's a need there to help them with their community garden or mural or just something just to reinvest in those communities.
I have a suggestion.
Please.
Oh, sorry.
No, please.
Um, so some of, uh, our rec programs in the summer, whatever we have, whatever we have going on, I don't know what they are. Is it possible we could take some of that money and make sure that, uh, as many kids as we have space for who income qualifies can participate? That we could do that? I don't know if that's real, you know, illegal or whatever. But, you know, like a CAM program costs 25,000. you know, like a camp program costs 25,000. You know, 25,000 to be a lot to a family, so is there anything we can do so that, you know, we could take 5,000 and let kids go free for the summer, or whatever they can't afford to pay up?
I will tell you, we do have a scholarship program already, but unfortunately, a lot of people don't take advantage of it, so we always have funds available for those that need them.
And so we just have to make sure that parents know that those.
I think where there may be a gap, and we're evaluating this this year, is to qualify for our scholarship program, we don't want to be the ones that are doing, like checking income levels, so we try to follow other programs. If you're enrolled in SNAP, or the school lunch program, or, and we try to make it as broad as we can, then you qualify for the recreation scholarship program, and that can be used for youth sports registration, any of our programming that we might have a fee for, and this is for adults as well that want to join the Aqua Plus, that want to skate at Jay and Lyndley, it does not qualify for like rentals or birthday rentals, those are, you know, like personal items. But what we're hoping to, where there is a gap is those that are still not needing needs and Black Step, and we have a lot of them, that they don't, they make more than to qualify for those programs. So, and we're also looking at trying to bring rec-free swim lessons as well.
That's a good one.
Yes, so those are already ready, you don't need to use your clothes for that.
Mayor, if I may, just for councilor Matthews, so I looked it up, Pledge for Wild last year, we gave them $2,200 from visitors and locals that pledged their dollar to Wild for Flag. You text to Wild for Flag to 44321, I can send this out to you. So we can get more people to understand that there's already a Pledge for Wild campaign, and that if you enjoy the trail, you pledge just a dollar, that we can actually continue to help Flag Trails Initiative get funding that way, and it could really become quite effective for them. So that's, that's a suggestion. So it's already a program that started, we just have to probably do a better job getting it for our.
I like the sustainability aspect of that, not in terms of Nicole's department, but in terms of in perpetuity.
Yeah, definitely, and they can visit, it looks like eight different locations that we can consider wild places, for instance, the National Forest, it speaks for Canyon since that Crater, or Parky, Wild up Canyon, Oak Creek, and Hart Prairie, and all of those areas will have, I think we're getting signage out there that shows that they can be pledging, did you enjoy your hike kind of thing, would you then donate a dollar? So if we could get a better network of us all talking about it, that could really continue to be big dollars for them.
Thank you. So I have a couple other thoughts, I'll try to be, I'll try to say this in a way that allows you to use decision tree, my dress, to filter things the most appropriate answer, and of course, this is only one of seven voices here, but in terms of the council POC, the initiative fund that we have, I never want to spend all that in one place. I think it'd be important not to spend it too many years in a row in the same places. But also, you know, here, we're talking very big dollar signs for a lot of things during these budget retreats, and I like to see that $20,000 distributed amongst causes where they're really going to feel the additional influx of a little bit of money. That just makes me personally feel good, and I just think it's those moments, those small cash infusions that can really make a difference for folks out there trying their hardest under very limited resources. I think the Arizona Trail is different than the Black Step Trails Initiative, I think it would be a worthy target of a little bit of funding, just to strengthen that partnership and keep the Arizona Trail going through Black Step front of mind. And all of this kind of feeds into, you know, above and beyond, so general budget parking lot, where there's extra money that you're finding in the couch cushions, Greg, and, 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 Rick. The helping lift salaries a little bit more, definitely a priority. Another one for me is making, you know, and this goes back to trails and connectivity, multimodality, big shift policies, making sure that we're cushioning the edges of those projects and efforts, and for example, the protected intersections and the raised bike lanes along Butler. It's, I, I think we voted unanimously to make sure those were fully funded in our previous capital retreat, it seems like we're talking about using grants to do that. That's fine if the grants are there to replace the other funding, but my other ways of prioritizing extra funding that we're finding would be to fill in those gaps and make sure that that these improvements and these new connections are well on their way. I went out with Martin for a whole morning very recently, the past couple of weeks, he showed me all of his pie in the sky wishlist items, and we drove all the way around town looking at the things that are being done, the things that are going to be done, and the, and the things that he's dreaming about, and so those would be the kinds of ways I'd like to direct our efforts this year and the next couple of years, just to really leverage the idea that we're behind that and that we're making those transitions possible. There's a lot of repairs that need to be done on our asphalt portions of foot trails after this winter, there might, there might be room for thinking about getting rid of that asphalt and going back to a composite, and where those things aren't being funded, I'd like to see that. I've also still always smarted at the fact that we went through all these improvements in the Bow and Arrow area, specifically Zuni, I think, and we never put sidewalks in there. I feel that's a matter of social injustice, I'd still like to see that rectified, and just other sidewalks, pedestrian improvements, and connectivity is where my heart, my priority would be, in addition to taking care of our staff.
Thank you. I want to touch on one of those topics, because it's in further into what you were suggesting or asking about, the two protected intersections along with the raised pedestrian, pardon me, bicycle cycling name along Butler, two separate projects, actually three projects, the two intersections, we probably, I was chatting with Rick, you know, if we were to look at, I mentioned this earlier, a possible reallocation of the $3 million that otherwise would be going to match the downtown miles with the recent appropriation from the Transportation Board, maybe we could now reallocate those monies into the projects you're making reference to. The, we heard earlier that the Butler project could be, of course, near $10 million, we don't know yet, we're still doing some, some early concept design on that. That one most certainly will require grant funding, but maybe this could be some potential match for grant funding. So the takeaway is we might be able to capitalize the two intersections and look at possible match money for a grant for the Butler project, and then we take note of all the other things that you mentioned.
Thank you. And the Butler project, of course, is just one specific example, and only the start of a raised bicycle pathway network throughout town, and real quickly, just to acknowledge that I was, my, those comments were in reference of what councilmember Sweet already mentioned earlier during the retreat.
Thank you, I'm done. Yes, councilmember.
I have some question about the parking lot council. So can we suggest, like, small agencies, like they were suggesting, maybe to give some money to, about $5,000?
Out of the initiative?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for the question. As I was hearing the conversation, it seemed maybe we come back to council with some ideas, and perhaps the council can generate some ideas, this is your initiative, we don't want to make that decision for you, but we certainly wanted to help inform the discussion, so maybe we can come up with some ideas, if I can do the same and circle back in a couple of weeks, we kind of need to have some definitives well in advance of when the budget gets approved. We were a little bit at the tail end last year when council made that appropriation, we'd like to add a little more of a cushion this year.
Can I just be a bag in?
Absolutely.
So I'm familiar, and not a lot of people are, with a small nonprofit, I volunteered to help write some grants for them, they have a unique focus, they pay for cremation of people who have committed suicide, and their families can't afford to give them any type of burial, and so they work with one of the local agencies here that do cremations, and they pay for that so the family isn't burdened with not only the shock and struggles of a family member committing suicide, but they pay for them to be laid to rest, so it's $1,000 per person, what they've negotiated with one of the local fortuitaries, so it's not a lot, but it's sadly a need that continues to happen up here, and it doesn't get a lot of press, but, you know, it's invaluable to someone who doesn't have the means, didn't have the insurance, and then a loved one takes their lives, and then they don't know what they're doing. Of the times when that happens, and I'd like to see maybe a little bit of money going to.
Thank you. Do you know the name of?
AOK.
Sorry, I didn't catch that earlier.
I didn't say.
Other thoughts, comments, suggestions? Yes, please, councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, councilmember Aslan, for backing up my earlier comments, and I still, for me, would like to have the protected intersections as my number one goal for the parking lot, I feel like it's a needful goal, and if we can make that happen, it'd be huge for our community. For council initiatives, one that I had, I was approached by the International Film Festival, they would like the city to sponsor, this is their first year, I think they reached out, I'm just trying to figure out creative ways that the city can partner with them, so I'm wondering if we could set aside some money with the council initiative fund to sponsor local events, the film festival, or Holton, or the Jazz Festival, Boat Festival, and become community partners, if we haven't already, did various community events in town.
Mayor, I thought councilmember Sweet, I, I would like to caution you on this suggestion.
Okay.
There are so many festivals in town, I think the best thing that we could do is for you to direct them to Discover Black Step, and once they've created their marketing material, and sometimes even if they need a little bit of support, we help market that festival, because there are so, I mean, I could, I could open a producer guide right now and show that to you, and you will be coming with request after request, and that's why Discover Black Step has said, we can't sponsor these like this, but what we can do is we can help market and make sure that we give good visitation, hopefully, and inward and outward. So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out. Now, if you want to make a rule that you might do it at one time when they're first starting or something, that could happen, but all the other event players will come back to you and say, well, what about me, and I'm doing something different, and I think it will really be hard to manage, so I'm just throwing that out. We are 100,000% happy to help market them through Discover Black Step, and each time you get a request, I mean, have you submit to me or Trace Worth.
I appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah.
It's a lot of different ones in the festival. Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah.
It's three o'clock, almost quarter to three on a Friday, I don't want to overextend here, if, if there's no other comments, I think we can wrap this up, and Mayor, you can bring us into an executive session, but before that, if anything else on the council parking lot issue topic.
Do we have to just say one? I say I agree with both of them.
Yes, you can do that.
I think, I think that's good. The intersections, I think, is a great first step of mini, now I can't help, they go down the street and see sidewalk dirt and the bike lane and go raised, you know, you know, I'm just, that's what I'm seeing, so I think this, we've got to start somewhere, we've done some stuff, but I think is really critical, we are a very popular destination for people who want to be outdoors, but if, so I am equal with also supporting our staff, because nothing happens without a good team, so.
Thank you, and a reminder, the bike pilot project is coming due days soon, it will revisit some of the things that are already mentioned about, but I'll, if you just, you know, it was a pilot project, and, you know, one of the benefits of pilot projects is learning what we did right and what we might want to do better, and so I think it's all been very instructive and really excited to hear, hearing the comments and the desire to take it to the next level, and so, yeah, that conversation will continue. Mayor, anything else on your end? I'm good?
Yeah, nothing else, we've already had public comment, so we just have adjournment.
Katie, is there anything you would like to?
Like to pass around some things.
Well, I'm going to start by thanking Katie for facilitating and maybe inviting her, any final nuggets of wisdom you want to share with us, or any more of your questions?
I wasn't planning on doing a final question, although you could say that it's been a beautiful weekend, so I hope everyone gets to enjoy the beautiful Black Step this weekend, and thank you for, for all of our presenters today who were flexible with the timing and helping us keep on time, so thanks very much.
Thank you.
Great, everyone have a good weekend, and we'll adjourn.